I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions; not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. And with that, we're going to call for some public comments this evening. Do we have any public comments from the Board?
I do have a public comment.
Please, select woman's shroka.
I received a picture, a photo, of the donation boxes that sit in the bricks, the Walmart parking lot, and they looked horrific. So, for the Chair's suggestion, I called the name on the box, the SupportConnection.org, and they referred me to the donating people, the Standard Recycling. So I contacted Standard Recycling, and they are going to come and put cameras on them so that hopefully it will deter people from just dumping stuff there because they were disgusting this last week. So, he told me to take a drive-by and see if the cameras are up and that I can contact him anytime that there is an issue. So hopefully, they will look better than they have in the past.
Well, at your request, I did add this to the agenda, so we will discuss it a little...
Why didn't you see it on the agenda?
I'm sorry. It's, um...
Current business.
Yeah, current business.
Oh, okay.
So we will...
Okay.
Have a little more dialogue on it a little later in the meeting. Any additional public comments?
Yes, sorry, yes I do, I almost blew it. There will be a pancake breakfast tomorrow morning at the Eagle House from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m.
I would just like to let everyone know that tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. in this room, the Zoning Board of Appeals will open the hearing for the 40B Pondview Commons Development Project that's filing under Chapter 40B, and that starts tomorrow. This development is for 200-plus units, I believe, in the northwest corner of Lunenburg on Howard Street. So if you are interested in hearing and/or participating, it starts tomorrow right here at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso, for that reminder. No public comments this evening from me. Do we have any public comments this evening from the public? All right, seeing none. Any announcements this evening?
Other than the ones that have been made, just adding on to the CBA public hearing, the comprehensive permit is on our town website on the front page. If anyone wants to view, the entire permit application is up for review. And just a reminder, the special town meeting is November 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the middle school, high school auditorium. Warrant articles are due by the 20th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. All right, communications from other boards. We do have a request from the School Committee, and I see the Chair of the School Committee here, so if you wouldn't mind coming forward. Ms. Ashambo introducing herself, and thank you.
I'm Carol Ashambo, 662 Page Street, and I'm the Chair of the School Committee. And this letter was written by the School Committee for the Select Board. So, "Dear Lunenburg Select Board, The Lunenburg School Committee respectfully requests the Town of Lunenburg use appropriate funding, including ARPA funds, to increase the safety and walkability of Lunenburg with additional sidewalks. Many students live near the Turkey Hill Elementary School and Lunenburg Middle High School. Walking to school for many of these students is dangerous due to the lack of sidewalks near these buildings. We do understand Massachusetts Avenue is under state control, therefore the town has no jurisdiction over the sidewalks there. We're also writing to our state legislators to ask for assistance increasing sidewalk availability on Mass Ave, particularly east of school property. The town is able to make some of our roads safer by adding sidewalks. We would be happy to walk these roads with you as well as the DPW, police, or any local citizens to check out the viability and necessity of sidewalks near our school buildings. These sidewalks would not only help protect our students, but would increase safety and quality of life for all citizens on our streets. We thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, the Lunenburg School Committee, Carol Ashambo Chairperson, Brian Layton and Vice Chairperson, Laura Kelly Secretary, Anthony Schoolenbrini, and Peter Beermore." And you should have received this communication. If not, I will make sure you get it.
All right, thank you. Just in case any members have any questions for you...
Absolutely.
...just related to that letter. Are there any questions related to the letter?
No questions. I have a comment, and I think...
Sure thing.
I think that what transpired, first of all, I'm completely in support of it, and I think what transpired with the busing and then that whole kerfuffle that happened with that, I think it's probably long overdue that the town align the sidewalks with the policies of the school for those exact purposes, and also for people in town center in general, since that's where most of the schools are. But I support that idea, and I think we should look at all different matters, especially with ARPA funding available, to do some of these at least, and I think they make sense to do.
Regarding the bus kerfluffle, I did want to talk a little bit about that just to make sure you understood where we were at with that because it had been talked over by this Board, so we just wanted to make sure that we were all in a, you knew where we were at. So we have a three-pronged approach to this particular problem that we honestly thought we had communicated to families, and apparently families did not hear it for whatever reason. So the first was to make a short-term solution to the problem, and that short-term solution was to work very hard to get kids on the bus. We had three families that were concerned about the bus, and then after it was brought up at the Select Board meeting, we had 241 families. So, after, actually, after we extended our policy, we probably had about 40 families, and then we said, "Okay, we'll get all of you on the bus that need to go on." Then we had 241 children that needed to be placed. They did place them. As far as I know, somebody requested busing last week, and they were the last ones to be placed. So they have been placed, but this is not, obviously not sustainable, because it's stressful on parents, it's stressful on us, and more importantly, it's stressful on the kids, and we can't have that. So, the long term is to look at this policy and see if we can in fact say that we can bus all children. Now, busing all children, making that decision, is kind of multifaceted because we know that at the moment we can bus all the kids, but we have about 100 high school kids that drive to school. But if we say we can bus everybody, we have to have room to bus everybody. So, that's what we're exploring at the moment. If that doesn't work, then we have to make a decision. Do we once again set a mileage, you know, barrier and say if you're beyond whatever mileage, you cannot ride the bus? Because if we say we're going to bus everybody, we have to have room to bus everyone. The problem with that is, we added a bus this year, which enabled the extra kids to go on. However, if we have to add another bus, it's $143,000 per bus. If our budget had to sustain $143,000, there would be a cut somewhere else, obviously. We can't, we don't have an extra $143,000. So that would be the decision that would have to be made by the School Committee, and would be, is being talked about through this fall. What are we going to do about this? Now, things like the 40B development, you know, if something like that should go through, let's say it takes four years for that to go through in operational, then the policy may have to be looked at again because that is way far out, and we would have to bus those kids. So any of those decisions, as far as increasing housing in town, certainly affects this decision. But I wanted you to know that not only did we find a short-term solution, we're working on a long-term solution, and we're working on why this message did not come out the way we thought it had. So, as far as busing goes, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other comments or questions related to the letter?
Can I ask a question? I'm just curious, when was the last time this particular policy was implemented? Because I don't remember us not busing all kids.
The implementation became, it was totally implemented during COVID. We understand that. Prior to that, what would happen is, people would go out to the bus where they thought the bus would stop, and the bus drivers would let them on, and the school was not aware. So there were more kids on the bus than people were aware of until, like, they would call the bus company and get the bus company to put them on the bus, that type of thing. Now we have made that a strict policy, that if somebody's added to the bus, it has to go through the superintendent's office. So it is my understanding that that particular situation played into it prior to COVID. You know as well as I do, that particular conversation didn't really take place...
Right.
...on the School Committee prior to.
Okay, I was just...
We were both there.
Yeah.
And...
And it never happened.
That conversation never happened. When I asked that question, that is the answer I was given.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss something.
Nope, that was, that was the deal. The policy was set in 2005.
Yeah.
I wish I could say I knew exactly how it was implemented in 2005, but none of us know that. I live too far out. My kids would have been bused regardless. I have no idea. Superintendent wasn't here. I don't know.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
I believe I heard you, you were done?
Yeah.
I believe I heard you mentioned the opportunity or some interest in doing a walk through along the roads. I would certainly be interested in doing that. Is that something that's set yet, or it'd be something you'd want to...
It was something that we put in the letter to suggest that if people wanted to see what the situation was, that we would be happy to do a walk-through with public safety people. We also invited the state legislators, if they wanted to come along, and just see what we're talking about. There was a parent talking about walking not far, on Northfield Road, and she walked with her kids this summer and had to jump in a ditch because there was no place to go with the traffic on the road. You would know that situation, you know? So something that we think, well, this is very close, this is not an issue, is an issue. And we certainly don't want anybody getting hurt or anybody having to jump in a ditch or, you know, we want to make as informed a decision as we can. So if that's something that the Board is interested in, if Mr. Jeffries, if you want to coordinate with us, we can see what we can do.
You certainly can. Any other comments or questions?
Thank the Chair for sharing, sharing that info. I would say one thing without belaboring the point is that one of the things, that the policy seemed to basically be across all grade levels, and as you review the policy, I would probably suggest that the policy, if you're going to start making it so that not everybody is bused, and I understand the budgetary constraints of that, I would start with the older grades, the people who are just more aware, and keep it, like, if you start making primary kids walk, it should be pretty bad. Like, the budget should be pretty bad.
The policy states grades three to 12.
Yeah, I would, I would...
Eight to two kids are bussed anyways. We bus all of them, but some of them didn't sign up, so they didn't get on the bus.
No, no, but even six, what I would say is that you...
Well, that's the other problem. They didn't sign up for the buses, and after we brought it up, then 200-plus people decided they needed to sign up.
It was 200-plus people all of a sudden decided to sign up.
No, no, I understand the communication, and of course, there's always a communication breakdown.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying the policy could be tiered.
Yes, definitely. That's something we have discussed, is tiering the policy.
And I realize it's out of the scope of this, but I just wanted to mention. But I thank you for coming forward.
Not a problem.
So my comment, Ms. Ashambo, is, you know, while serving on MPO, there was a study that was done, a walkability study of...
Yes.
...several communities, Lunenburg being one of them, and they were looking at areas where income was a little lower than average, also areas where there was a higher percentage of people with known mobility issues. And so what, and then also just typical, I think there was some measurement of foot traffic. So the results of this were that the area between the Fitchburg Line on Two A and Walmart is a target as, you know, high need of sidewalks. And then also in the Wellum area from the Lemonster Line also to Walmart down Electric Ave. So those were two areas that were identified as high priority, given income, mobility in that issue in those areas. I would be more inclined, I'm going to be very transparent, there's a high, that's a high, Wellum area is, has a high density, and sidewalks go, will serve a lot more people. So what you get out of the cost per sidewalk, all sidewalks are important. I don't want to say that kids walking to school is not important, but, you know, we only have so much money. And so I would prioritize sidewalks in our more densely populated areas of town prior to being in support of adding sidewalks to the Northfield Road area where you can go, you know, a quarter mile and maybe hit five, six homes. With that said, I do understand the, I do first of all appreciate you being welcoming to me when I came before you guys to vocalize these several concerns. I think that everything that I brought up was addressed, so I really want to thank you, thank you for that. I think that the sidewalk issue, especially on the state roads, because we do have a lot of state roads in the center of town, is definitely an issue that I will raise with our state delegation and to see if we get some progress on. And I think that this has a future point, that we will need to do some looking into sidewalks and see where there are opportunities near the center of town that would meet your needs as well as, you know, the needs of the community. So thank you for coming today, as always, and I appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we are going to move to our 7:10 appointment, or a couple minutes late. We're trusting that we will not have any Zoom issues this evening. So, this was, just to remind the public at home and in the room, that this was a request from the Lunenburg Water District to meet with us to provide some information about the reactivation of the Hickory Hills well. It was noted at the last meeting that it's the preference of the Water District for this to be, anyone who has questions along the way, to ask them along the way, and again, that's the preference of the Water District. So we will assist you with regulating that, but again, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, Fran, introducing yourself. The Water Commissioner is Ty and Bond, and the floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Fran McGrath, Superintendent of Lunenburg Water District. I just wanted to go a little bit of a water flow, as how Lunenburg operates on a flow for rainwater and groundwater. Lunenburg and pretty much all the surrounding communities are part of the National River Watershed, Watershed Basin. In Lunenburg, there's actually three basins. You've got the Fallula Baker Brook Basin, the Malpus Brook Basin, which is Hickory Hills, and the Catacunamuck, which is Lake Shirley. Currently, all the water supplied in Lunenburg is the Catacunamuck Basin, so everything comes from the Lake Shirley, which gets discharged into the Malpus Brook, and people use it from, even in the Baker Brook. So the, what I've always said, and even to Commissioners, is we always should have numerous sites that, to draw water from. That way we can manage the water resources, not overdraw, overburden one particular spot, and, you know, create low water shortage areas, and so you draw it from multiple areas, you kind of just sip on it from multiple spots. So that was mostly tied to, that we could, we should have another basin that we can access. So if we get the Keating, sorry, the Hickory Hills back up and online, we get another basin to draw from, even, you know, with more control of the management of the water source. So the future, I think, is going to be, the regulations on the new PFAS contaminant that's coming out, they've dropped it substantially, went from 70 now to 20, and we're hearing rumors of dropping even more. So I think the potential is there for treatment needs at the other sources. So others, the other sources, even the Hickory Hills, the other issues like hardness, we get complaints of hardness at the Keating well, iron and manganese from the Lancaster wells. So if you tie that to also the PFAS, there's the potential there for treatment plants needed at other sources. So without the Hickory Hills well as an active source, we do not have the ability to do the treatment plants at those other sites. We need more redundancy. If we took, for example, the Keating well off, we do not have one-off water on Lancaster Ave to meet the demands of Lunenburg. If we had the Hickory Hills well online and Lancaster, we're good to go. So we, that's our main goal, is to fund redundancy for, if something were to happen, that we can, you know, continue to go on. So our main purpose of this is, the big push right now is funding. As more systems find this contaminant, they're going to be pursuing the funding as we are now. So I think as, in time, the funding source is going to shrink up, so our goal is to go at it while the funding is there and acquire as much of it as we possibly can.
Fran, if I can just interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
I wanted to say to the booth that we're having a difficult time hearing up here because the conversation's happening in the booth.
It's not in the booth.
It's not in the booth, it's in the hallway?
It's in the hallway.
And that was my error, was the hallway, which I can't see. Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Okay, so the goal of this is, in my hopes, is to get the support of the Select Board and the residents of Lunenburg, that we're going to call a special district meeting. Tomorrow, we have a Commissioners' meeting, and we're going to, it's on the agenda to pick a date for the, to call a special meeting, and I just want to get the support of the Select Board and the residents to hopefully show up at that meeting and vote to approve, to appropriate the money needed to do the pilot study. And the pilot study doesn't mean that well's going online. The pilot study means we're going to investigate if that well can be treated to go back online. And we're not going to know what the future's going to bring for that until we do this testing. So for that, I have Ty and Bond, and I'm going to call up Tom Mahana, and he's going to do a little presentation and go through all the parts of why we need it and the ways, the ways we can do the testing.
Thank you, Fran.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you, Fran. My name's Tom Mahana, I'm the Principal at Ty and Bond. With me tonight is Lou...
Soraco?
Senior Project Manager at Ty and Bond. We also have participating remotely Derek Belanger. He's our, kind of our lead technical engineer that's available for any technical questions that Lou or I can't, can't answer directly. I do have our presentation here on the, on our laptop, just so it makes it a little bit easier for us to present, so I believe whoever's monitoring or operating our presentation, we'll just let you know when we want to advance the slides. So our presentation tonight is really just kind of hit on five different, five different topics, the, expand a little bit more about what Fran just described about the need for the Hickory Hills well. We'll talk a little bit about the water quality concerns, particularly iron, manganese, and also what he just mentioned with the PFAS. Lou's going to get into a little bit more detail on what the options are that we evaluating for the pilot study of the, of the well. We'll also talk about, a little bit about what the expectations could be for what a full-scale treatment plant could look like for this, for this source. And finally, we'll touch a little bit upon what the, what the impacts to the Hickory Hills Lake is from the operation of the well. So next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the history of the Lunenburg Water District. For those that don't know, the Lunenburg Water District was established in 1939 through an act of the legislator, legislature. The Water District operates six wells to meet all of their demands of their system. These six wells are located in three different locations throughout town. The Lancaster Ave Wells, which is four wells representing a well field off Lancaster Ave, of course, the Hickory Hills well, and the Keating well, which is their largest source located south of Lake Shirley. The distribution system is over 50 miles of water main, pipe sizes ranging from four to sixteen inches. The Water District provides water to approximately 2,500 customers, which represents a service population of about 7,100 people. On average, the consumption of the customers is less than 500,000 gallons a day. That equates to about 350,000 gallons a day during the low period, low demand periods, usually in fall and winter time, and that increases up to about 1.2 million gallons per day during their peak demand periods. Next slide. So the Lunenburg Water District is, has to operate their, their water system under the conditions that are listed in their Water Management Act permit, and that's issued by Mass DEP. So the Water District is limited, or in this case, actually restricted, that they can only withdraw on an annual average .54 million gallons per day, and that's from all of their wells combined, and that's, that's on an annual average basis. This permit balances a variety of factors, you know, it's, the intention of the permit is obviously to provide protection of water resources, protection of drinking water supplies, wetlands, habitats, fish and wildlife. It's also meant to establish reasonable conservation efforts, but also look at, provide reasonable economic development and job creation opportunities within the community. So as Fran was just talking a little bit before, this is, this is a snapshot of the permit, and it lists on the next slide if that's advanced. Great, thank you. So you can see the six different sources of the Water District in what their maximum daily approved daily withdrawal rate is. And as you can see by the list, that's a million gallons per day. So it's important to note that even though there's, there's six sources here, and they all have a variety of withdrawal rates, the, the Water District is limited not by the sum total of what all of these, what these sources can produce, but on, you know, on average, .4, .54 million gallons per day. So the sum total of all these sources obviously adds up to a lot more than, than that amount, but the Water District is limited to that .54. Next slide. So Fran, just talk a little bit more about, you know, what the, the impact or the risk to the Water District is with, if they lose some of their sources. And the Hickory Hills well has been offline since 2012 due to high manganese levels. And as you can see, between the Hickory Hills well, which is the second largest source of the district, and the Keating well, which is their largest, their largest source, it has an approved rate of 1.44 million gallons per day. So if the Keating well, so they've been operating now for 10, you know, 10 years without Hickory Hills, and if they were to lose the Keating well, either become inactive or something were to fail and they won't, wouldn't have this supply, you can see how now the available water supply for the district gets severely restricted as to what they can, you know, how they can meet their demands. And essentially, all of their demand would have to be met by the Lancaster Ave Wells. Next slide. So a little bit about the, you know, the vulnerability of the water system in general by losing these sources. We talked about the Lancaster Ave Wells alone cannot meet the peak demands of the water system. And also, it's important to note that Wells number one and four have a total capacity of .47 million gallons per day. They also have a limit on how much they can operate continuously. After about two to three days of continuous operation, these wells need, have to be shut down, or usually shut down on their own due to overpumping of the sources. So it's important to note, and, you know, just to kind of reemphasize what Fran talked about, you know, at the beginning here, you know, restoring the Hickory Hills well is critical for the Water District to be able to provide resiliency in their water supply, and restoring that, you know, that almost three-quarters of a million gallons per day is vitally important for the Water District. So next slide. So I'd like to turn it over now to Lou. He's going to talk a little bit about the water quality concerns of the source and also what, how our treatment alternatives are being considered.
Thanks, Tom. My name is Lou Soraco, I'm the Senior Project Manager at Ty and Bond. So why has Hickory Hills been offline for as long as it's been offline? Well, originally, went offline because of iron and manganese. .48 and .43 milligrams per liter is a good approximation of the average concentrations of iron and manganese that they historically have seen at the time when they decided to shut the well down. And the reason why it was shut down at the time, iron, it's kind of an aesthetic concern. You'll see a lot in like the iron color discoloring, it'll build up on the walls of the pipe, wreak havoc and cause nuisance out in the distribution system. Manganese, you'll see that more like a dark, blackish staining on fixtures. It doesn't, it also settles out into the system, but of recently, they, the state has determined that manganese is now more of a health concern as well, so they want to really limit the amount of manganese you do put out into your system. Next slide. So those potential health impacts from manganese, they kind of start... So those potential health impacts from manganese, they, they kind of start around the .3 level for Massachusetts right now, and it varies from state to state, but that kind of lines up with the EPA's Health Advisory. So you really don't want to have a lifetime exposure of more than .3 milligrams per liter. If it does get to that level, they, Massachusetts requires you put out notifications that you really shouldn't be using the water to mix up baby formula, it's not good for, for small humans. So, and the Hickory Hills well does exceed that limit of .3 as we saw the previous slide about point, a little over .4. How has this historically been dealt with? There's a couple of different options. On many sources, they use sequestering, sequestration. Basically, it's the use of a chemical that holds the iron and manganese in suspension so that it doesn't fall out and create these nuisances throughout the system, coming out in the faucets or staining fixtures. However, that doesn't solve the problem with manganese. It's still in the water, so that's, it doesn't actually remove it, it just prevents it from, from being noticed. So what can remove it from the water? There's softening, water softening, ion exchange. It's more on a small scale, really wouldn't apply to a well of Hickory well, well size. Chemical oxidation, that's the tried and true method that's been used in New England for decades. Basically, you use an oxidant like chlorine. It oxidizes the iron and/or manganese from the water, creates a particle, and then a filter can, can take it out of, out of the water for you. An emerging technology that's actually several years now, there's multiple locations throughout New England, use biological filtration. It uses the naturally occurring bacteria from the well itself to remove the iron and manganese. So the, the filter is conditioned so that they set up shop there and remove it for you. The benefits of biological filtration are higher loading rates, so you can put a, you can treat the same amount of water in a smaller footprint. And the process is more efficient, so it creates less waste. So when you have sites that are tight or, you know, there's difficulties in disposing of the backwash water that the filter has to be backwashed periodically, this helps you reduce those costs. So it's definitely an attractive one to consider. The other thing that has shown up recently in the well is PFAS. Now PFAS is an acronym that is used to describe a family of contaminants. This family can be 5,000 or more long, it's growing every day. But it stands for per- and polyfluorinated substance, alkaline substances. It has been determined that there are, they do have a very negative impact for health, and they, Massachusetts has set a limit at 20 parts per trillion for six of these specific contaminants when added together. So you cannot exceed the, that level. EPA currently has a 70 parts per trillion Health Advisory, but as Fran mentioned, we are aware that they're going to be, coming up with regulations that apply across the, across the country that are more in line with Massachusetts regulations, but in some respects even more restrictive. The sample results from Hickory Wells, the initial sample result was 37 parts per trillion, so over that 20 parts per trillion level. Whenever you get that, these, these levels that we're looking at now, parts per trillion are far lower than we've been using in the past. It's just the technology to, to count to that degree, that, that small amount is kind of an emerging technology and they've recently been able to do that. That's why it's, part of the reason why it's, it's come to light now. So you do a repeat sample due to the sensitivity of, of the sampling, and that came in at 30 parts per trillion. Just for comparison purposes, they took a sample right out of the surface water of the lake, and that came in just under the, the 20 parts per trillion at 19.4. Next slide. So what is the next step? You can't just turn the well back on, you can't just throw in any treatment system you want. The first step that DEP requires you to do is complete a pilot study. So based on what's in your water, you propose the different various technologies you think would be appropriate to remove these contaminants. DEP reviews that proposal and they either agree or make comment. You come to a resolution, and then you proceed forward with that, that piloting study. The benefits of those studies are, and the intent of the reason why you need to get DEP approval is to prove that what you're going to be investing in will actually work before you invest the money in it. And the second thing is, the pilot study gives you valuable data that we use to refine our designs, to basically pre, you know, put together a more efficient design based on those, those preliminary results. Next slide. Next couple of slides, I'll just go through just some examples of the different types of bench scale testing real quick. There's this technology that's being used for PFAS specifically, not really much else at the moment that we're interested at this particular well. But it basically grinds the media up into smaller particles, puts it into a very small column, and you can run a lot of tests quickly, so you can get a lot of information more rapidly. But there's inherent inaccuracies with this testing method. It helps you compare a variety of different medias, but it doesn't actually tell you how long that media will last in, at full scale. So it's, it's more of a, gives you a relative difference between medias.
Lou, I'm going to ask you a question. So I'm aware through my own profession of the risks of PFAS, but can you just, if you wouldn't mind us going back a little bit more and just explaining, how does PFAS become a contaminant? Where does it come from? And what are the risks to people associated with this consumption?
Sure. And if you'll back up a couple of slides to the PFAS and drinking water. So unlike iron and manganese, iron and manganese is naturally occurring, it's found throughout New England, pretty much any well you dig, you'll probably find some amount of iron and manganese in it. PFAS is completely man-made. These are chemicals that were developed back in the 50s or so, even earlier, and they were used in a very variety of products. Some common household products, you'll find it in Teflon, anything with Teflon, you'll find it in the lining of popcorn, micro波 popcorn bags. It can be in dental floss, waterproofing agents for like Gore-Tex coats. And for these reasons, it's so ubiquitous in our lives, it's almost everywhere, there's very strict protocols for when you actually go and sample the drinking water itself. You have to follow these strict protocols because the levels that we're looking at are so low, even your clothes could give a faulty reading. So another, another reason why there's repeat samples, they take blank samples and make sure that the, the blank is actually blank. So we follow these protocols to get, to get the most accurate information. And the basic hazard of these is, they're, they're, they're known to be carcinogenic, so they, they cause cancer in various forms. So if we scroll back, I think we're done with the bench scale testing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to do this, but so, so I guess, as they break down, if these products or whatever are in the supply, they break down in this, they leach essentially out into the water?
Another, another term that you'll hear for these, these chemicals, PFAS, you'll, you'll hear this forever chemicals, right? So they were manufactured to not break down. They, they don't degrade very well. They bioaccumulate, and that's why the levels are so low, because they, you know, every molecule that you consume just kind of hangs around in your body forever. So it's difficult to destroy these things, there, there's more and more technologies that, that are being developed every day to actually break down these chemicals. Most prevalent one is, you know, after it's removed from a source, adhered to, say, GAC, granular activated carbon media, they take that media to a, an incinerator, and they, and they have to reach, I think, upwards of 1,800 degrees to break down the, to break down the chemical.
Thank you.
Moving on to onsite pilot scale study. So different from the rapid small scale study, the onsite pilot study uses, say, six-inch diameter columns, media unchanged in its, in its native form, and you run water through it, and it gives you a one-to-one for how, how we think it would react in the, in the, in the full scale. So for iron and manganese, we can complete the, the testing in a matter of weeks. But for PFAS, typically, it takes quite a bit longer to see breakthrough on a, on a filter. So those, those pilot scale studies can run as long as a year, just to get an accurate curve for the breakthrough. It all depends on the various contaminants that are in the specific water. But we typically feed those pilot scale studies around two to 10 gallons per minute. So not a, not a lot of water, but it, it can take some time. The next type of pilot study we can do is a full-scale demonstration, where that's, we have the actual full-scale equipment that we might use. The picture there shows a GAC filter that was used for just that, to run the water through it for a period of time. You, you have different sample ports down along the length of the filter, you can watch it as the contaminants kind of break through the filter, and you run it until you, you see, you see that it's, it's broken through. So these, these have the benefit of being able to use the water for something, because you're, you're treating it and you don't actually have to, to waste it, but it is the most expensive option. So just running quickly through the options, so for Hickory Wells, we could do a biological only pilot. DEP does recognize that granular activated carbon is an acceptable technology that will, that will remove PFAS. The real question that gets answered during a pilot study is how frequently are you going to have to replace your media? That's the biggest question. It's not, not really whether or not it's going to work, it's just how long will it work? So they will allow you to test that full scale if you really want to. So for that reason, you know, the lowest option here, cost option would be to just do the biological filtration pilot study, which is the one that the district is kind of interested in, in terms of its efficiencies. And that would take around two to three months and cost roughly 160,000. Next option would be to add the rapid small scale testing to that pilot scale testing. So then we get a comparison of medias, so maybe we get a better idea which medias work better. You could also use ion exchange to, to remove PFAS, and that has proven to be effective in some sources, but you need it to be a certain times better than GAC due to the cost of the media to make the economics work out. So that's some of the things that the rapid small scale can help us figure out, but not as accurately as the pilot scale study. Which is, option three is to run a pilot scale for roughly over a year to do both biological and, and PFAS pilot scale testing. The trick here is that we need to remove the iron and manganese before we do any PFAS pilot testing. So in addition to do the pilot, the PFAS pilot testing, we have to keep the biological pilot running the entire time, even though we've got the data we needed in a couple, couple of weeks, once it's up and running, we have to keep going to produce the water for the PFAS pilot. So that's why it, it takes so long and increases the cost. Last option would be to run the full-scale demonstration, so just buy equipment that we think that would, you know, we'd be utilizing in the full-scale study. It would give you the best data, maybe allow you to use the water with DEP's approval rather than just pumping, pumping to waste, but it does have the highest price, price to go along with it. And just what would you expect in a full-scale treatment facility for these contaminants? There'd be a number of six to 12-foot diameter pressure vessels, so these steel, steel vessels with the media inside them. Depending upon the results of the pilot study, we, we size the diameter and we size the number of them to most efficiently lay out for, for those results. Building height roughly around 30 feet, the, the GAC filters 26 feet tall around. Chemicals onsite would be the same as currently being used at the, at the well, there'd be no new chemicals needed. Biological filters, they would, they would require some tanks to capture the backwash if we were to be treating onsite at the wells, because there's no place to dispose of anything at the existing well site. So we have to capture everything, settle it, we recycle some of it, but ultimately, we'd be hauling the, the removed iron and manganese offsite. The PFAS media, say if it went GAC, after the media's exhausted, that filter comes offline, a truck comes, they pump out the, the filter media, they haul it away, they give you new media, and you're back up and running. We, we have heard that there are some concerns from the residents surrounding the lake, though the well is in close proximity to the lake. However, this well has been tested and permitted as a groundwater source, not under the influence of surface water. So when a well is brought online, DEP makes you run through a various, various series of tests to confirm where the water's actually coming from. If it were coming or under the direct influence of surface water, it requires a, a different level of treatment and monitoring to be used as a public water supply. So that is not the case here, it's, it's treated as a groundwater supply, so not directly connected to the surface water. But we did take a look, I know there's concern that they, if the level of the lake might be negatively impacted if the well was turned back on. Surface area of the lake is roughly 319 acres, so that equates to about 130 million gallons per foot, so 8.6 per inch. Roughly two inches of rain during the summer months would replenish the wa, any, any water that would have been taken from the source had it a direct connection to the lake from the well. But seeing as that's not a direct connection, we, we surmise that the impact is, is quite minimal, but during a pilot testing, that, that those, those levels will be monitored so that we could, could further back up that assertion. Any questions?
How long was the Hickory Hills well operational before it was, its, the use was terminated?
Right. Fran, do you have that?
The, the original well was found in 1985, right when I first started working here. The permanent well was put online in 1995, and we took it offline in 2012 due to the manganese levels.
Seventeen years, right?
Seventeen years, yep.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Or comments?
So the treatment, well, first of all, it's not part of this study, but it'd be interesting to know what those PFAS numbers are from the other wells, because now that, since I'm a Water District user, I'd like to know that, because I'm on the Lancaster well.
Yeah, we, we've tested every site, every source numerous times. The Lancaster Ave Wells range from nine to no detect, so we have some that, there's no PFAS at all detected. I would say the average is like a reading of like four or five. The Keating well, the highest producing well we have, I think that was in the same range, five or six for the, for the reading. But the new regulations, we hear of possible future things, they're not going to go by that one number, they're going to break it out into certain segments. And if they look at that, a certain particular contaminant, that's our concern. If they look at certain ones, then, you know, that's what, people could start getting in trouble. But we don't know those yet, so that's why we're kind of, we're kind of trying to prepare for the future, that if it does affect us, that we're, we're ready to go. You know, we, we got everything in control.
The eventual treatment plant that would be used, would it be onsite, like at the well site, or would it be somewhere removed or?
That, that is the most difficult part of that. It's because the site is very small, we're looking at possible land near that site, so we'd pump it from the well offsite, treat it, and then discharge it back into the water system. That's all up in the air at this time, because we need the pilot study to determine the size needed. Maybe it could fit there, pretty unlikely, but we, we don't know until we do that test, because the chambers that they need, the steel chambers, we don't know the size, how many of them, that kind of thing. So we need, we need to learn a lot before we can actually answer that question. But my gut feeling is, we need to relocate, to find a new source, new site, to put it. But my gut feeling is we need to relocate to find a new source, new site, to put it.
So any other comments or questions? Tell me, Andrew.
No.
I want to summarize what I think I just heard. And just to make sure that, hearing this correctly, and for the folks at home who I know a lot of this is probably a little overwhelming, especially since it's data and it's not stuff that I think many people interact with every day. So just recapping what you provided to us through the presentation is that the Hickory Hills is that part of the Mass DEP permit, which provides for the pumping of multiple wells, and that there's a limit on how much water can be pumped every day. And that what you're, the focus here is to provide resiliency to the system, that the number-one well that's being utilized is the Keating well, that there are four other wells along Lancaster Ave that are really not too utilized. The amount that can be pumped from Keating is a lot, and the amount that can be pumped from Hickory Hills is a lot. That if we lose the Hickory Hills site, which is already offline, that if we lose a Keating site, that there will likely be a problem with water delivery, that there simply wouldn't be enough water in the system to deliver to customers. And so the request is to, what you're looking to do is to bring the Hickory Hills well, first of all, to do a study of it, of using all the different options that you presented today, that your request is to do a study of the Hickory Hills well site, so that way you can identify what treatment is needed in order to bring that site back online. And just to clarify the concerns of those who live in Hickory Hills, that this is a groundwater well, that it's pumping from water that's down in the ground, that it is, that that groundwater is not connected to the surface water, which is the lake itself. And so the anticipation is that there would be no or minimal impact from the reimplementation of the well. Is that a fair summary?
I think that's very fair, very accurate, yep. I agree with that, everything you said.
So I expect that there will be some people who disagree with that. And so I want to provide the community the opportunity, those at home, those in the room, to ask additional questions or provide additional comments. Ms. Bertram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hickory Hills does have concerns about the impact to the well, to the lake. And representatives of Hickory Hills have met with the Water District on numerous occasions, and it's particularly been myself and John Fortune who is here as well. And we've expressed our concerns regarding the potential impact to the Hickory Hills Lake should the well go back online. One of the questions that I would have, if it's okay through you, Mr. Chair, is there was a statement made that the well was online from 1995 to 2012, and I would question how often that was pumped? Was it on a daily basis? Was it an emergency basis? How often was the well actually pumped during that time period?
Yeah, well, I know you have more than that, Ms. Bertram, but if you wouldn't mind us answering that question to either Tom or Lou or Fran.
I'll get that one. At the very beginning, that was the main source that fed Lunenburg. As time went on, where the iron and manganese levels rose...
If I can just, at the very beginning of what?
1995.
Got it.
When we first put the well online, we used that as the main source, and then we used Lancaster Ave just to assist that well. As time went on, the iron and manganese levels rose, we were seeing numerous complaints for staining of the toilets and sinks and faucets, and whenever we flushed hydrants, it was like flushing crude oil. It was black. It was causing serious system problems. So as time went on, we put the well more of a summertime use, as needed. So if Lancaster needed to take a break, we needed to let the wells recharge and get their water levels back, we would run the Hickory Hills well. And that went up until the Keating's well came online.
And when did the Keating well come online?
2010. So in the past, I would say that well summertime probably ran, it probably ran every three or four, maybe three or four times per week. I don't, I didn't bring any of the data of what we pumped, but I know some years we pumped 70 million gallons out of that well. Typical pumping for the whole year, as of right now, is around 180 million gallons per year for the whole town. So if you take that number, I mean, it produced half, almost half of what Lunenburg uses on a today's daily, yearly basis.
I'd ask you not to go too far, so that way Ms. Bertram, no, no, that way Ms. Bertram can ask the next question.
I actually was just going to get a statement, but if you have a question?
No, no, no.
Okay. So we do have concerns about the impact to the well, and those concerns actually stem from the 1994 pumping report, which actually says, and I'm going to read it, that the water from the well is effectively the lake. The water pumped from the well is effectively the lake. So obviously, that would be of concern. That's the 1994 pumping report by Dufrane and Henry. So we have met with the Water District on numerous occasions, and we've expressed our concerns, and we've discussed our apprehension that continual pumping of the well may result in lowering of the lake level. I want to point out that this lake is, this well is a very shallow well. I believe it's approximately 30 feet, and it's in very close proximity to the lake, I believe less than 50 feet, and correct me if I'm wrong. So obviously, it's not a 400-foot well, it's a 30-foot well. The average depth of Hickory Hills Lake is eight feet, so it's a very shallow lake. So we have expressed these concerns to the Water District. And in addition to the impact to the lake level, we're also concerned about the continuation of existing recreational uses because this is a Zone 1. As you know, this came up at the last town meeting. So we have met with the Water District, and they have agreed, as they've noted, they want to go forward with the study. And they have agreed to allow Hickory Hills representatives to incorporate into the study the impact on the well. They've talked about at our last meeting, a hydrogeologist so that they can study that impact. I do want to point out, as far as the impact to the lake, I did reach out to the Division of Water Supply of DEP and did receive a response from Maryelle Stone, who is the Deputy Regional Director of the Bureau of Water Resources. And in her response to me, she does say that while the approvals issued in 1994 and 1995 remain in effect, a 48-hour pumping test at the full withdrawal rate may be necessary to reevaluate water quality and, in some cases, monitoring of the surrounding groundwater and surface water as part of that evaluation. So DEP is aware of our concerns and taking them seriously as part of putting this well back, the process to put this well back online. So the commissioners have indicated they are willing to incorporate an analysis of potential lake impacts and to allow us to review the scope before it goes out to bid, which we truly appreciate. But one of the things, our biggest issue is modifications to the well to provide treatment and returning the well to service can't negate, negatively impact the Hickory Hills Lake or its residents, which consists of over 570 homes. You know, if the lake were to be, to go down or to be impacted from the actual treatment process itself, it will negatively impact water values, home values, it will negatively impact the aquatic life. So obviously, it's of great concern to us because of the proximity of this well. We understand that the Water District wants to go forward, and we're not necessarily opposing that with this study. However, we are keeping the interest of Hickory Hills residents and our community and the aquatic ecosystem in the forefront of our concern, and will continue to watch this as it moves forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question. So am I correct that the last well at the town drilled was the Keating well?
That is correct.
What is the cost of drilling such a well?
The Keating well, it was around $4.5 million to get that well online.
Are there any other, I mean, my own personal hesitation, and that's why I asked about where the treatment plant would be too. And I did not know the depth of the well was only 30 feet, which is...
It's 49 feet deep. It's still shallow, but 49 is deep.
Fair enough. So I should say 50 feet to make it easier to remember. But you're talking about potentially 30-foot tanks, at least that was in the presentation of treatment plants, in a protected area because of wetlands, because of the fact of the lake and everything. I mean, it just, it certainly raises an eyebrow. Again, I don't, I have enough information to say whether I would support it or not. I certainly would probably support the pilot. But I'm just wondering, are there any other places? Lunenburg's a big place. Are there no other places in another aquifer of the three that you're talking about to look at a well that may not have the iron and manganese that you're talking about or that would require the treatment?
Very unlikely, but we do have some potential well sites. Most of them on Lake Shirley, peninsula's on Lake Shirley. We do have a small well site on Goodrich Street, very limited capacity, probably half the capacity of the current Hickory Hills well. But I believe in the end, the final cost would be similar to what we'd be looking at for a treatment plant at this source, which the capacity of this source is extremely large compared to one of the other sources. There are potential well sites off of Mass Ave, near White Street, up in the, where the, they're talking about the...
Where Bright Farms was going to be.
Yeah, yeah, that place. There are potential bedrock wells. Bedrock wells, very likely that you're going to need treatment. So I don't see, if there was another spot that we could go to, I would prefer to go to a site that doesn't need treatment. I don't see that. I see wherever we go, we're going to need some form of treatment. And I agree with you, the site of all your concerns with the tanks and that residential area, that's why I say it'd be very difficult, and that's why we're looking to relocate to not far right up the street nearby that we could build the treatment plant.
Thank you.
I'm reminded of a statement that was made several years ago when we were, when the town was considering, when the district was considering selling water to Lancaster. And a statement was made by a water commissioner at that time, my good friend, Mr. Rogers, that we have plenty of water, no problem with water, you know, and I don't want to paraphrase him altogether, but he certainly made the argument that the town has plenty of water and plenty of water sources. What has changed, if anything?
That mentality's still accurate, assuming everything is working as it's supposed to be. Take away the PFAS and the potential treatment that is needed, the Keating well has enough water to have supplied Lancaster and Lunenburg. On the Lancaster side of things, we are on top of the game. We have potential well sites in Lancaster. We were going to use Keating well temporarily until sites were put online in Lancaster. Lancaster, we were on top of that, and that would have been a goldmine for Lunenburg, for money coming in and fixing infrastructure. So the Keating well does have the capacity to feed everything, but what if? That's the big thing. So that's what we're leaning to, the Hickory Hills well, that if the what-if ever happens, the Hickory Hills well can take care of us.
All right. And we all know, given our meeting last week, that people are prone to do really random things. And so, you know, we're in a world where you can't, you have to plan for the unthinkable because the unthinkable can actually occur. And so I think what it sounds like you're saying, which I'm in support of, is that the unthinkable here is that we lose our high-capacity well. And then we're all in a bind in a town where there's plenty of water, it's just ineffective tapping it, or rather ineffective means of tapping it. So from what you said today, I don't have any opposition. I know that you're looking today for confirmation, or rather, support from this board. So I do want to give the public another opportunity to ask any questions, provide any comments, before I turn to my colleagues here and ask for their thoughts. Yes, I think it's John, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive. I'm also a member of the Hickory Hills Board of Directors. And I think, as Paula mentioned earlier, the Water District has invited Hickory Hills to be part of their meetings, and we appreciate that. We're having open and honest discussion, sometimes maybe more frank than any of us would like. But they're open and honest, there's no doubt about that. You know, I think as I look back and hear some of the dates, because I hadn't heard them before, this well started in 1995. It's a good thing it was manganese, because from '95 to 2012, we were consuming PFAS. It was in the water supply, it can't be verified, right, because we weren't testing it until 2020, but it was there. You know, and we, people that live on the lake have some idea what some of the sources might be around the lake, right? So, you know, it has been there, we should be thankful. And as Paula mentioned, there are the three concerns that we have, and that is, turning on the well, does it affect the lake? We want to know. Because of our residents there, we all pay a lot and do a lot to the lake to maintain it. So we need to know that. The other thing that's interesting is the other wells have a lot of space around them. If you know where the other wells are, you know the Keating well has a lot of land around it with no houses, nothing there. Lancaster wells, those four wells there have three houses nearby, but other than that, there's many, many acres that are open. The Hickory Hills well has literally a spit of land where the well is, and there is the Woodlands property that's there, and there's all the lake property around it. I think the DEP had it right when they were saying originally that you should have a very large Zone 2 and a 400-foot Zone 1 around the well that is basically not touched. That's not the case at Hickory Hills. It is a well that gets touched within 50 feet of the water every day. People walk by it every day to use the area there. So it makes some sense what DEP was asking for. For whatever reason, they allowed this well to go online, you know, we look at that, I don't know why, that happened in 1995, but sure enough, it is a well, an approved well, and that's what the Water District is trying to get turned back on again. I think if they went back and tried to do it again today, it wouldn't pass. We wouldn't have this well in place. So I think your questions about, are there other places for wells, is a very good one because I think that's something that should be considered as we move forward. As a Water District user, I'm all for having as much water as we need. You know, I think that's important for all of us. But as a resident of Hickory Hills, we need to be very cautious about this particular well because over time, we are also going to do things in the lake like we have done in the past, you know, put chemicals in to kill weeds, do other things, use it with our motorboats, et cetera. And that's literally 50 feet from a well. So we need to be concerned about those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bertram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't say this earlier. Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road, and I'm the current president of Hickory Hills Land Owners, Inc. One of the things that I just wanted to follow up on that John said is the location where this well is, is basically a finger that points out into the lake, and there's a restrictive easement around that portion. There is a disagreement between Hickory Hills Land Owners and the Water District as to how far that easement extends and what it includes, and our councils have gone back and forth. But I want to point out, when the discussion turns to moving the treatment plant away from the site, the impact to the Woodlands condominium development will be great. There are a number of high-value homes in that area that if the roads are ripped up in order to move the water from one point to another, that impact is going to be pretty severe. Don't know yet because the study hasn't been done, nor has the engineering been done. And additionally, the easement does not extend through the entire parcel. So it will certainly be a challenge to put a treatment plant off of the easement location.
All right. I have a question for, I think this is going to go to Fran. So the question is about betterment. So the cost of this study, how is that going to be paid for? Cost of a new well, estimating at $4.5 million, how would that be paid for?
Well, that's one of the main reasons why we're trying to do it now while the funding's available. So we're hearing principal forgiveness loans through the state, through SRF funding. The original pilot study will come out of our current funds. We have a system enhancement fund, which is the connection fees that new connections pay. So we have, it's over a million dollars in that, so we'll take the money from that to do the pilot study. And depending on the outcome of the pilot study, then we apply for our funding through the SRF state program.
And would you expect that some of those costs will be passed on to customers in the form of a betterment or just added to rates or surcharges?
It would be added as part of the rates. It would not be a betterment. It'd be a rate increase.
Okay.
All right. So you guys have touched on, we're all concerned about how to get to that next step, too. We just need to get things going, do the pilot study, and then we need to figure out that next step. And it's not going to be an easy one. Funding's going to be very difficult to put as part of our moderate pay system.
All right. And of the four options, which option are you looking to employ?
It was the second option, longer-term testing, because... Uh, it was the second option, uh, long, longer-term, uh, testing, because we wanna be able to, uh, know for budget, calculate from, from year to year, and, uh, we need to lo- know how long that media is gonna last. And, uh, you know, if we, we have a budget that says it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for a year, and we don't, we don't make it through the year, and now we need 200,000, we, we don't, we, we wanna know that. We wanna go into this, uh, with all the facts in front of us, so we can fund and budget and do our rate, uh, based on tru- true data. So, so we don't wanna do the longer-term testing on it. We don't, there was a, there was one of them, which was the full-blown treatment plant, for two to four million dollars, that, we're not, we're not gonna do that one. That was, that's not an option. So we're gonna do what the, the cheaper ones. Uh, I think we're looking at the $300,000 one as our...
That's option three.
Option three?
Yeah.
Yep, that's a, I was more on the option two, they're on option three, so it'll probably be option three, but...
And can you just remind us when the meeting is that's voting on this?
Uh, we haven't set the date for the actual special meeting yet. Uh, tomorrow, we have a regular scheduled commissioners' meeting. Uh, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna talk, because we need, uh, two weeks to post it, and, uh, we wanna put out, uh, data, uh, bills are coming on October 1st, we wanna do a stuff run there, notify people, and, uh, put in newspapers, stuff like that. So we just wanna run through timeframes and see. Uh, I think it's, the meeting will probably be October 19th, Wednesday, that's my guess, I'm not sure, we'll see what they decide, but tomorrow's our meeting at four o'clock, and their, uh, commissioner's gonna decide on when, when they wanna call that meeting. Uh, also, just to note, what, uh, with Paula, what, what Paula and John said, uh, yeah, we, we want, we wanna support them on this thing. So the pilot study, when the engineers design it, uh, this proposal goes, uh, to Mass DEP for approval, we also wanna pass it to Hickory Hills as well. Let them look at it, they see something they want us to do, but we wanna do everything so, so they are comfortable knowing that everything's, uh, on the up and up and, uh, legit. So, we wanna make sure everybody's on board with this thing. And, and our main goal is to, uh, let's say that well was active, uh, capable of being pumped right now, doesn't mean we will run it, it's, it's there if needed, uh, that's the thing. Right, right now, if something happened to the other sources, we, we can't even turn that online, that, that, that well's offline. So it, we just wanna get things, you know, up and going, so if something does happen, we, we have the availability to, uh, actually run it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have one last question. If, if this would get approved, let's just say, middle of October, and it, the pilot program gets approved, how quickly would the pilot program, from start to the end of the pilot program, how much time are we talking about?
Uh, the engineers are anticipating beginning of the year, we could start the pilot program, so it, there was a year program, so, uh, it would be...
All the way, all the way through 2023.
23?
Yeah, 2023.
So, time for 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public, uh, on this? Would you mind just stating your name?
Matthew Woodward, uh, Arbor Street, I'm the Lunenburg Water Commissioner. Um, so just a, a couple of things I wanna touch on. Uh, one of the biggest parts of this is, is Fran and all these guys have talked about before, is the state level right now is just, uh, 20 parts of a trillion. We anticipate, we don't know when, that it more than likely will drop. Right now, we're in a very unique position here in Lunenburg, where we have the active wells that we do, um, looking at it from a tactical point of view, that we know if we lose one of these, we may be in trouble. Having the Hickory Hills well with the PFAS problem now puts us on the radar with the state, that we can apply for funding. If these levels drop, you're gonna find a lot of communities in Massachusetts are gonna be in trouble, and they're gonna be applying for this funding. So at this point now, if we stay ahead of the game, we apply for our funding, I believe Littleton just put a plant into the head, I wanna say almost $6 million forgiven off it right away. So that's our push right now, is to try to get this in the system, get it going, to get that, get that funding secured, and then hopefully we can get some loan forgiveness or whatever, just to lower the cost, you know, to our end users. Worst-case scenario is if they lower the levels and we're not ready for this, we might be in trouble in Lunenburg, you know, we, we won't be able to supply the water that we've been, we'll have regulations, and then on top of that, all the funding is coming from our customers, which means the water bill is gonna go up a very significant amount, which we're trying to avoid.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, uh, question, well, any other comments from the public, Town Manager?
None, thank you.
All right. Seeing no, none, I'm gonna open up to the board for discussion. Uh, again, the Water District is just, is asking us for our support, uh, on this plan, so open to the board for your comments, your thoughts on this.
I don't live on Hickory Hills, and I'm not in the Water District, I'm just gonna put that out there right now. So, this doesn't really affect me as a customer or, um, resident of the Hickory Hills Lake. But I do think that this is something that we should look into for the customers and the people of Lunenburg, and if we wanted to expand our Water District to other residents later in time, we could supply them with water that they might need.
Thank you.
Um, very interesting, thank you for the presentation, that was a lot, uh, and I, I definitely hear the concerns of Hickory Hills, for sure, I mean, and it doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's a little ambiguity as to how much it really would impact the lake, it doesn't sound like a solid known. Um, but I suppose as long as the, uh, I mean, nothing's final here, but I suppose as long as the line of communication remains open, and they are constantly allowed to express their concerns, and, and, um, that's all factored in, I'm comfortable enough, I suppose.
I would say that probably going ahead with the pilot program is prudent. Uh, I think that the, that year's study will obviously give us a lot more information for what we need, but again, the, the sensitivity of the area that it's in is not conducive to some big treatment plant, that I would, that, that's my biggest concern. So even if the pilot is like, okay, we can do this, but now we're gonna build a three-story facility on, you know, one of the scenic places, in a sensitive kind of conservation air, and ecological area, I would have trouble with that. So I'm for the pilot, but I would probably see, a- and again, I, I take people at their word that they've looked for other well sites, but, um, you know, that would seem to be a better chance. I'm also, a 50-foot well just seems kind of shallow in today's world. Um, that's probably more conducive to changes in groundwater rates than a 400-foot well would be, uh, just sifting, filtering down from the ground. So, uh, I'm not against it, if the Hickory Hills Association is, is cautiously okay with the pilot, I probably am, too. I mean, obviously, as a Water District, uh, user, I wanna see safe water, but I'm also sensitive to the environmental, environmentally sensitive areas we have in town, I wanna protect those as well, so...
I wanna, I have a couple of comments. First, I wanna thank the Water District, uh, for, um, requesting to meet with us today to get this information out there to the public, and make sure that, you know, you're really clear with what it is that you're trying to do here. Uh, and I think that the presentation was, was really well-prepared. I appreciate the large font for the people at home, uh, that font 25, or whatever it was, 73 probably. Uh, no, it was really, um, the font was really helpful. So aside from that, you know, a couple of thoughts that I have on this are, um, you know, we did a walkthrough of, of Flat Hill Road, uh, because we're having issues with, with groundwater, and, and literally, we're seeing the groundwater come out of the ground in many different locariat, in many different areas along Flat Hill Road, that's having a negative impact on several residents. Uh, I'm not as concerned about a 50-foot well, knowing that, you know, even in my backyard, I can't dig a hole in the spring, that's more than a foot down, 'cause I'm hitting water. Uh, so I do understand, um, that sometimes shallow wells are necessary, but I also understand the concerns from Hickory Hills residents about, you know, hey, if you're talking about a lake that's, you know, eight feet on average, but I'm sure there are parts that are, that are a little deeper than that, and a well that's really close by, I, I understand that natural feeling of, how can you say conclusively that, that one isn't affecting the other? I think a reasonable read would be that it probably does. Um, but I understand that not everyone has their degree in, in geology, and, uh, understands, uh, and understands it. So I think a study here is necessary, uh, I absolutely do support it, and I think that on, you know, as a select, as a selectman, I mean, I'll, since we're being very frank here, I have a vested interest in the property values of Hickory Hills remaining the same or increasing, um, because that has a impact in our taxes. Uh, we need to be able to pay for the things that we're doing. If we don't have a lake there, that is a negative value for the town, is, because it's a negative value for our residents. Um, and so, no matter what comes out of this, I know it's, you know, I, I wa- I don't wanna pretend as if we can say, you know, comfort and, and recreation versus water supply, right, that we definitely need water supply, but, but if, on this hand, you know, that comfort and recreation, uh, if that goes away, the, the impact is, is far graver, I think, than looking at potentially tapping some of these undesirable sites. Uh, but it's cost-effective pretty clearly to be able to take this approach, get the data, get the research, and if necessary, you know, do some, if it's determined in the course of the study, that the well can be brought back online, that they, that there's no real impact to the lake, you know, I don't, I don't, there's no negative here. Um, anything that builds resiliency for our residents, uh, everyone needs to drink water, everyone has to take a shower, everyone has to cook, everyone has to eat, everyone goes to the bathroom. I mean, water is just such a huge part of our lives, and, and we ourselves are made up mostly of water. Uh, so, you know, it's one of these really important things, I appreciate the approach tonight on resilience, and I will make the motion that the board recommends, uh, support, that the bo- excuse me, I move for the board to provide support for the plan as presented by the Lunenburg Water District, um, to implement option three, to provide a test of the Hickory Hills Lake, uh, end of motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion that's been seconded?
Uh, just briefly, um, to Mr. Alonso's point before, if we do, if you do the pilot, and it looks like it's green light that it'll all work and everything, his concern was, well, he doesn't wanna see a three-story facility there, I mean, is there an option other than that? I mean, in other words, if, is, is ta- from that perspective, if that's a deal killer, this three sto- does doing the pilot make sense? Is there an alternative location?
So, this, uh, we have the same exact concern as you do. I mean, some of these slide pictures, when they throw them up, I'm like, jeez, if we're not putting that over in Hickory Hills, then absolutely not. Uh, if it is truly, uh, these, as we've, the Water District has had many different, uh, presentations from many different companies, and we chose Ty and Bond, because we felt that they were the best serve for what we need. Um, there are many options as to actually how to set up this treatment facility. By no means, we throw in an industrial silo outside of Hickory Hills. Um, you know, while it is 28 feet tall, those ones, doesn't say you can't dig it 10 feet in the ground, start building, you're building. There's nothing that says you can't lay them down, there is many different options. Um, is it a concern? Sure, absolutely. But we won't really know until we have that study, and whenever we put in, I want it to look like a camp that was built in 1960, to be honest with you. I mean, that's gonna be the goal for what us do. If we can't put it on the sliver that we have there, we can pump it up somewhere else and, and cross that bridge when we get to it. But by all means, all of us on the water, we all live in town, too. We don't wanna see anything take away from Hickory Hills, as it's a part of us, just as is for everybody else. But do keep in mind, and I know this has had a lot of, uh, impact with Hickory Hills, Hickory Hills does make up roughly one-fifth of our water customer. So the reason why we came to you tonight is to, more of a publicity campaign, so the rest of the town understands what's going on. Naturally, we care about Hickory Hills, but we need to let, to let the, excuse me, the rest of the residents realize that there's some pretty big decisions that are gonna be coming up about their water usage, and we'd like everybody's input on this. Okay?
Do we have any...
Yes.
I just wanna comment back, I, I wanna make my position clear, that while I, I, I am for the pilot study, uh, notwithstanding every, all the things that were said about the facility that we made, I, I, I'm not proactively, before we see the plans, in support of a treatment plan, okay? I want that to be clear. That my support or not support of the treatment plan will rely on what its design and its location looked like after the pilot study, I'm just supporting the pilot study, I just want that to be clear, in case it wasn't. Maybe it was clear, but I made it absolutely clear.
It was.
Do we, any other discussion from the board? We have a motion and a second. Uh, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Uh, those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Um, and I do see that we have, is a resident online looking to speak?
Mr. Rogers.
But I will, and while we're doing that, Ms. Bertram, please. And I appreciate your involvement, Paula, because, you know, I...
Oh, thank you.
As a former selectman yourself, I think you, you certainly understand process, you've given the town a lot of your time and energy and commitment, I know how detailed you are, uh, and so it's really good to hear that this has been a good dialogue between you and the Water District.
Well, thank you, thank you. I just wanna make one point of clarification, John and I are representatives of the Hickory Hills Board of Directors, however, the board itself has not voted on whether or not to support this pilot study, we have a meeting tomorrow evening, so I just wanna make that clarification. There has been no vote by the 11-member board yet.
Thank you, Paula. And, uh, to the resident, Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, Dave Rogers, 82 Hyland Street. At this particular judge, I'd like to suggest, excuse me, that, um, uh, an additional safeguard be discussed and, uh, a plan implemented in case we need it specifically. Uh, I speak of, uh, we had a, a situation years and years ago, when Ed King was the, the, uh, the governor, and we, uh, got, um, intermunicipal agreement, uh, with, um, the city of, of Fitchburg. Um, and I was, uh, wondering if, if, uh, this, this should be taken a look at, and, uh, just in case we, we need it, we could have that as a fallback position. Hello?
Yes, we, we heard that, Mr. Rogers, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Fran's coming...
I, I...
Fran's coming forward to just respond to that question.
I offer that for, uh, consideration and maybe a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
All right, yeah, we, we have looked at that, we've, we've actually had many discussions with Fitchburg. Uh, this mostly took place when we were looking at the Keating well, we were doing options. Uh, one was the option of purchasing water from Fitchburg, and then when we did the financial calculations, it was much cheaper to put our own source in. Uh, so we still continued, uh, with the discussions, mostly when we were talking about the supply to Lancaster, we were looking for another available source, if, again, if the Keating well went down. Uh, we were kinda stuck with where would we put a treatment, I'm not treatment, uh, pump station. Uh, the pressure zones of Lunenburg and Fitchburg are different, so Lunenburg has higher pressure than what Fitchburg has, so that means we need to pump it. So we, we were looking for places to put that, we never really came up with a, with a solution to it. We do have an interconnection with the city of Leamester, in that case, uh, we could feed to Leamester, 'cause we have higher pressure than Leamester has, we, we can backfeed through, through to them, uh, and actually, we did that, that was probably eight years ago, they were doing a new water main and stuff, so we backfed North Leamester. Uh, but again, that one, uh, we would need to pump that to Lunenburg. So, we do have the ability to do that, I mean, that we require us to borrow a fire truck and, and pump it, but it, it is something that we could do. But, uh, Fitchburg is, yeah, that's always, always been a discussion, and, uh, yeah, maybe one of these days, we're gonna come up with a plan and actually, uh, and get it done, so. But I agree with Dave, it's, it's something we could, we should do.
Thank you, Fran. Thank you to Ty and Bond for being here with us, thank you to the Water Commissioners, uh, thank you, Fran, as well. Thank you.
And the second time was the charm, see? No interruptions.
All right, uh, we're gonna move on to the next part of our agenda here, we'll pause while they leave the room, um, but we're gonna move on to the next part of our agenda here, which is the, um, interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations, and this is a ratification, the Town Manager's appointment of a heavy equipment operator, Max Anderson, and to the Town Manager, if you wouldn't mind presenting this to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so as I indicated last week, um, there would be another, uh, heavy equipment operator to be ratified at this week's meeting, and as you stated, Max Anderson is the candidate's name. He has worked for Sterling Concrete since 2017, is, uh, working their concrete mixer trucks and other heavy equipment, and also has worked at, uh, landscaping company, and construction company, and tire service company. He has his CDL B license, as long as, as well as his 2A hydraulics license, and his 1B crane operators license. So, um, similar to the applicant last week, he has a great attitude, um, I had the opportunity to meet with him, talk to him... I had the opportunity to meet with him, talk to him, and I think he's going to be a great addition to the team down there. His references described him as very capable, and easygoing, and just an all-around great person. So, I'm asking the board to ratify this appointment tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the Town Manager? Is there a motion to ratify the appointment as requested?
I move that we ratify the Town Manager's appointment of the heavy equipment operator, Max Anderson.
I will second that motion.
All right, there's a motion, a second, any additional discussion? All right, as many as are in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, please thank him, and welcome aboard.
I will.
And what's the anticipated start date?
I think it's this week.
It's like tomorrow?
I think he's reading it, filling out the rest of his paperwork tomorrow.
All right, so we can go to the Town Manager's report. I need to step away for a sec, but to the Town Manager's report.
All right. Starting with the existing vacancies, there are two vacancies on the Finance Committee, two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission. The Planning Board has one vacancy jointly appointed by the Planning Board and Select Board until the next annual town election, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in these positions can find the application form on the town website, complete it, and send it to the Select Board's office. Any questions on these volunteer opportunities, you can also contact the Select Board's office at 978-582-144, extension 144. Current employment opportunities for the town, there is now one heavy equipment operator position, which is a full-time benefited position, library assistant, which is a part-time, non-benefited position, full-time benefited police officer position, production technician for public access, which is a part-time benefited position, van driver for the Senior Center, which is a part-time, non-benefited position, and videographers for public access, which are part-time, non-benefited positions. More information on these positions can be found on the town website under Employment Opportunities. Variety of updates from departments. For DPW, the DPW Director solicited bids for the six-wheel and 10-wheel trucks, and ordered both through state contracts. The expected delivery date for both is about 12 months out. The Director also solicited bids for the tractor with boom rotary mower, and ordered this through a state contract as well. The expected delivery for that piece of equipment is nine months out. All three purchases combined are approximately $1,140 over the capital appropriations from, there's two different capital plan years between those three pieces, and the overage will be covered within the budget. The DPW has been busy with catch basin repairs and tree removals, and our line painting contractor told the DPW Director this week that the line striping was scheduled this week. So, we're crossing our fingers that that is going to occur. From the Police Chief, one of the new cruises is now on the road, and the other cruiser will be on the road in the next few weeks. The department, just today, I got word from the Police Chief that their accreditation has gone through, so that was very exciting news, and I want to congratulate the Chief and all the staff that were involved in getting it to that point for the, through the accreditation process.
When you say gone through, you mean it was approved?
It was approved.
Okay, good.
So, they're official, it will officially be implemented in March of '23.
Excellent.
Yes.
Congratulations to all the people involved.
From the Council on Aging, the collaboration platform, Elder Connect, between the Police, Fire, and Senior Center is ready to go live, once one remaining component regarding a privacy statement is addressed by our Town Council. There will be a legislative breakfast on October 31st at 9:00 a.m. at the Eagle House, and Senator Cronin will be there as well to present the $100,000, I think, probably with a big check, for the ADA patio.
What date is this?
October 31st, it's a Monday.
Halloween?
On Halloween, yeah. You don't have to dress up. Pre-pandemic, there was a move to become age-friendly community. We had already achieved the state's designation as a dementia-friendly community, and there will be a re-kickoff of this on Thursday with this group. I'll be attending that meeting. The Meal Site Manager has already started to beef up the nutrition program at the Eagle House with a menu of home-cooked meals, and this should attract a lot of more, a lot more people to the Senior Center for this. And an update on the Formula Grant funds, that has been finalized by the state. The population figures will be based on the UMass Donahue Institute population, since the federal census figures weren't going to be ready until the spring. So, this was good news, as the population statistic that was in that, in the Donahue's population statistics, is 3,155 people over 60, and that is based on $12 an elder, which, so the town will receive $37,860 in Formula Grant funds, which is an increase of about $12,588 over the previous fiscal year. The Facilities Director and the Council on Aging will be meeting with McCarty Engineering this week regarding the ADA patio. The original estimate of 100,000 is now being identified is not sufficient to complete that project, but we will not know that fully until the engineer goes through that and we get more firm numbers for that. So, I will keep the board updated as that progresses. Land use, the Planning Board approved the site plan and two special permits for Uma Flowers at 43 Summer Street on August 22nd. The Lunenburg Central project has been progressing according to their schedule, with the walls being constructed, and the line striping in place at the intersection of Leamester Shirley Road and Fort Pond Road. And the owners of Lunenburg Central are interested in purchasing the property across the street at 400 Leamester Shirley Road, which is owned by PJ Keating, so they're doing their due diligence in pursuing that purchase. From the assessors, the principal assessor is currently working with the Assistant Town Manager and putting out an RFP for data collection to meet the required remaining five years in our valuation schedule. From public access, they're reviewing the production technician position description to attract more qualified candidates. They're meeting with the Assistant Town Manager and the cable manager are meeting with Personnel Committee on Thursday. And public access has finished filming the band concerts and will be moving on to filming the high school football games next. From our IT, our IT consultant plans on transitioning the remaining of the town email accounts for board and committee members during the month of October, but correspondence will be going out to everyone in advance to relay when that will occur, and training that's involved, and they'll be checking in after the process, because they know it's, unlike coming for staff, we did that during office hours, any issues that came up, they came around. So, they'll, might be coming to different board and committee meetings, just to do little, check-in with all the members, make sure everything's okay. The remote meeting equipment for the Ritter Building and DPW conference room has been received, and actually, the network administrator started installing that today.
Who's the network administrator currently?
Dan Nadereski.
Dan, okay.
From Facilities and Grounds, the new Facilities Director has hit the ground running, so he started two weeks ago tomorrow, and he has toured all the facilities, he's had meetings with various contractors, including the landscaping contractor, cleaning contractor, our current building project contractors, he's looking at fire safety, pest control, and other building-related items at all our facilities. He and the DPW Director have been in constant communication to provide continuity of operations from that standpoint, in transitioning over responsibilities. And Paul has reported that the Public Safety Building Chiller Project will begin in two weeks, and Monty Tech has begun the Ritter Break Room Project this week, and he's working with the Assistant Town Manager on putting various projects out to bid, because we have a number of building projects.
Can you let him know that we have a municipal building design committee meeting on Monday, this coming Monday? We're not looking for him to be at every meeting, but it would be nice to meet him, and then kind of work out with him.
Is it through Zoom?
It will be.
Okay.
Six of five.
Paul is also going to be the point of contact now with Ray Dunnett for the 30 School Street project. He is meeting with that team tomorrow to review the hazmat abatement, as well as the demolition and all that project before it goes out to bid. So, Ray is still, he's working on all the specs for that and plans, so that is moving forward as well. And I know there's more, because he's been very busy. We met with the school, the Facilities Director, DPW Director, Assistant Town Manager and I, so we got to meet the school Facilities Director and their new Athletics Director, so we had a very productive meeting, talking about where we can assist one another, say there's things that we both commonly need, like landscaping, that we work together on those types of things, and they are going to be meeting, setting up regular meetings as well as a group. Update on invitation for bids and requests for proposals. The Assistant Town Manager worked with the Conservation Commission on invitation for bid for work to be done at the Hollis Road property that is under the Conservation Commission. There are a number of building improvements needed at that property, so that needed to, bids needed to be solicited for that project, and that will be paid out of the HAWS gift fund account that's also administered by the Conservation Commission. With our current lease with T-Mobile for the Town Hall telecommunications equipment expiring, I work with the Assistant Town Manager in putting out an RFP, request for proposals for a new lease, and those proposals are due October 18th.
When is it expiring?
This month.
Wow, we didn't put one up.
Yeah, we've been working on.
Okay.
Oh.
But we'll continue to receive the same payments with T-Mobile until we get a new contract in place, new lease agreement in place. Request for proposals will be issued next week for the cleanup of solid waste materials at the Woodruff property, which is 104 Fairview Road, and bids will be due by October 24th. In other updates, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be having the first hearing on the Pond View Commons, as indicated by Vice Chair Alonso, tomorrow night, September 14th at 7:00 p.m. This is an in-person meeting, only there's no virtual component to that meeting. The Nishoba Associated Boards of Health will be holding a flu clinic at the Lunenburg Library on October 3rd from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's for all ages, pre-registration is required, and more information on this can be found on the Lunenburg Board of Health webpage.
Town Manager, I have a question for you. Why is the ZBA meeting, why is there no virtual component to it?
They had already advertised it as in-person without a Zoom component, so they couldn't re-advertise in time to meet the timing requirements.
Got it. But is it fair to assume that the next time, because it's not like this is going to happen in one meeting, so, that the next one will be?
I can ask the CBA Chair if we can do those as a hybrid meeting.
Yeah, and there's a lot of public interest.
The Lunenburg Business Association is doing a trunk-or-treat event again this year, and the state has firmed up, it's no longer tentative, it is Sunday, October 30th, 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Lunenburg High School Upper Parking Lot. And the Lunenburg Farmers Market, coming down to the end of the season, their last farmers market is September 25th, and the Historical Society Building is open during their hours, the farmers market as well, for anyone to visit. And again, the special town meeting warrant is open for submission of articles until 5:00 p.m. on September 20th, and the town meeting is November 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the Lunenburg Middle School, High School auditorium.
Any questions for the Town Manager?
I just have a question, are we advertising for a rec director, or no?
Not yet. We're still meeting with the Park Commission tomorrow night.
Okay, tomorrow night, it is? Oh, it's not the same time as the zoning board, is it?
It is.
It is, okay.
Okay.
I have two questions. What is trunk-or-treat?
That's been an annual event, basically, different businesses set up booths, offer candy or.
Out of the trunk, they're supposed to decorate their trunk, too.
Right, yeah.
Trick-or-treat is one.
Usually, it's like someone decorates, yeah, has their trunk open.
Yeah, decorate it.
Halloween.
And then kids can walk from one to the next without.
Walking on the street.
Right.
Where we don't have sidewalks.
We don't have sidewalks. But is trick-or-treat going to happen this year?
Yeah, so that was my next question, was.
And when would it happen?
Design trick-or-treat.
Trick-or-treat.
Why wouldn't trick-or-treat happen this year?
Oh, I'm just wondering, is it the same day?
I'll check with the.
Or are they having it on?
Chief.
Okay.
Yeah, the chief usually gives.
Yeah, he's the one that.
A recommendation on when.
When to have it.
When is the 31st? What is the day?
The 31st is a Monday. We typically do it if it falls on the holiday. It's usually held on that same day. I think it's usually 5:00 to 7:00, but I have to go back.
Yeah, we're going to put it on a Monday.
I know.
As you know, Halloween's not for me. All right, those are the only questions that I, that I have on the Town Manager's report. Thank you. As always, all right, so we moved our workshop anticipating that the Water District meeting would go long, which it did. We moved the workshop, the policy workshop, to next week, so just, I think those at home may be anticipating it, some people. So, next to our agenda is discussion of the 300th Anniversary Committee Charge. Mr. Franco, would you mind presenting this?
Yeah, not at all, okay.
What meeting was that?
It's in a folder.
Was it in a folder?
Yeah, it's in tonight's draft.
And we're looking at draft two, Tractor Clean?
Yes, and I put the wrong date on it, it's actually the 13th, so, that's very annoying.
What are we looking at, tractor clean?
Let's do tract, because it'll show the, so on, as you know, on the 23rd of August, I presented an initial draft of this. This draft with the tract changes, shows the changes relative to that previous draft that we discussed on August 23rd, and it treats the composition of the board not to exceed 11 members, it clarifies, we know on certain terms, that the Select Board appoints the members, and it treats the terms. We were concerned about continuity and that people coming on this, we have no interest in having a lot of turnover on this, we want continuity, so the thinking was that, once they're appointed, they, I mean, they may have to leave for whatever reason and be replaced, but the idea is that their term lasts through completion or discharging of all the functions and the dissolution of the committee. So, that's what's up in the preamble now. I can read that anew, if you wish, just that portion, or all of it, if you wish, but let me read that portion now, so the opening now reads, "The year 2028 will mark the 300th anniversary."
With, mine still says with.
Oh, jeez.
Probably want to change that, you mentioned that last time.
I did, I did, and I read it as will again, when I worked on it again. All right, so that needs to be amended. So, if we're going to approve this tonight, we'll do it with that amendment on the.
We're not looking to approve this.
What's that?
We're not looking to approve.
Okay, all right, so the two, "The year 2028 will mark the 300th anniversary of the incorporation of the town of Lunenburg. In order to recognize and celebrate Lunenburg Tricentennial, the Lunenburg Select Board has established the Lunenburg 300th Anniversary Committee. The committee shall be comprised of no greater than 11 members, each of whom shall be appointed by the Select Board for a term to begin on the date of appointment and terminate when, as determined by vote of the Select Board. The committee has discharged all of its defined functions and is dissolved. As a body, the committee shall." As a body, the committee shall," and then we have the enumerated, which I, nothing's changed there in substance. Everything we enumerated, discussed last time is fine. The one, as a matter of style, this can go a couple ways, I'll just, right now, all of these charges individually enumerated are sentences, but they could also be clauses, separated by semicolons. You know, we could go that route as well.
I appreciate the grammatical annotations at the bottom.
I did have to chuckle, I have to say. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have two comments, first of all, in the preamble that Mr. Franco read, it says, "The Lunenburg Select Board has established the 300th Anniversary Committee, but I believe Town Meeting has established."
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
So you probably want to put that.
Yeah.
As to his point about enumerating these, these ones, I would choose not option one or two that he offers. I would option that we would either numerically enumerate them with a 1, 2, 3, 4, or proceed each one of them with a bullet point, just to show that it's a part of a list. Either one would work for me.
Okay, I'm in favor of the numbers. It's always clear.
That's all fine with me.
Otherwise, I'm for this.
Selectwoman Sroka, any comments?
Well, I'm just reading coordinate with other entities within the town government, including the police. And then he says fire department, aren't they both departments? Do we have to put department in there? Can we just say police, fire, DPW, Historical Commission, and schools? Can we just take out department? It reads funny to me. I wasn't here last time.
I have no objection to your recommendations.
Well, then it would read, for example, well, maybe, maybe police department, because it will have coordinate with other entities in the town, including the police. But if we didn't have the police there, it would be including the fire, if we took out department.
No, it would say the police, fire. Or you could write, including police, fire, DPW, Historical Commission, and schools.
To put police and fire departments?
Yeah, or both are departments.
I would make police department.
Or a school department too, because they're all departments.
Are you coordinating with the department or just the chiefs?
Right, and that's what the other thing said, chief of. It said in the ones that we looked at for reference, it said the chief, the chief of police, the chief of the fire department, and also like the superintendent of schools. That's who you'd be coordinating with for these things?
All right, so.
Like you can identify that particular person.
We could say, including the chiefs of the police and fire departments, the DPW director, the Historical Commission, and the school superintendent of schools.
And it would be in order to facilitate.
Yes.
So put a 2 in there.
Yes. Excellent.
Do we want to, I mean, you know, I can think of several members of the community, or at least even boards or committees, that would be helpful to be part of this. But since we have 11 members, I don't, I don't know if we need to go into any more detail as far as that membership makeup. I think that within this board, that we can just keep an eye on those things.
I would agree, it gives us lots of latitude. We don't have to define exactly, we need one person as part of this one, yeah. It just makes it complicated.
So there's a couple of modifications to this. Mr. Franco, do you think that you can make those modifications, send them to the Town Manager for distribution to the full board, so that way we can vote on this next week?
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you. Were there any other comments on the anniversary charge?
It's going to be a hell of a celebration.
300 years, all right. Next to our agenda, we're going to talk about special town meeting warrant articles, and the ones that have been submitted thus far. So I see that we have one more than last week, which is E.
Actually, two more.
So D and E stabilization?
Yeah. So special purpose stabilization article, as we have done in the past. Once we know what our new growth certification value is, then we can determine if there's any excess tax appropriation to be made. And depending on what the transfer article will include and any other monetary articles that would be impacted. And Article E was an article that was brought to me from a lieutenant of the fire department. And he will be coming in to, at the meeting, the first meeting in October to explain more. But it's basically buying back time or that they can for retirement, five years or more of on-call time.
I will say that I am generally very good at reading this legal stuff, but this one in particular, hopefully comes with a Tom Mix decoder ring. Because I'm reading this and I'm like, first of all, there's enough instances of permanent dash intermittent to be more than enough for my lifetime in one paragraph.
Yep, straight, I think, from the MGL.
I'll have to spend lots of time reading that paragraph.
We'll break it down.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because it's like every fifth word is fire. And every tenth word is permanent intermittent.
Lots of subsequent and provided.
Semicolon.
Okay, so the plan is that we will have a presentation from some of these sources, from the different sources, to these articles, to the Select Board, to discuss these articles.
Right, probably the first. Yep.
It's only Tuesday, though, that's how it should, it should be, it should be. It's, it's.
Based on my calendar.
Because by Saturday, it'll be right on.
Are there any, are there any, I don't know if everyone heard that, because I was, we were kind of having a sidebar here. The, the plan is that we're going to have different groups that submit articles to come before us, before we make recommendations. All right, and I know we have some questions on E. Is it possible to ask, well, I have to double check to see if we, who this one says. Given the language of the executive session, could we ask Labor Council about this in executive? Or do we need to provide them a question on this?
I would say, yeah, I wouldn't fit the purpose.
If we can just provide Labor Council, I'd like to ask Labor Council a question about this, just get their feedback on his thoughts about adopting this provision. Okay, any other?
You want it now?
He's already here, so we.
I feel like she was ready for that, she was ready for that.
What you wanted to ask about, but if I can, I'll give it a shot for you.
Only if you're able to, if you're as familiar with Master Law, Chapter 32, Section 4 to B, which is about the, for a reserve or permanent intermittent police officer or a reserve, permanent intermittent recall firefighter, firefighter retiring from a governmental unit accepting the provisions of the sentence, the board shall credit, in addition to the five years of credit allowed pursuant to the preceding sentence, as one day of full-time service each day in any year, which is subsequent to the fifth year, following said appointment and on which a reserve or a permanent intermittent police officer or a reserve, permanent intermittent recall firefighter was assigned. I'm not trying to get to a sentence here, period.
So maybe ask the question, maybe I'll answer the question. It's been a while since I've taken a look at that provision and since it was added. But what was the core of the question?
The core of the question is any thoughts on, on risk of adopting the provision?
Yeah, so I think what that does is it makes it easier, because you're talking about 32, right? And so 32 is the retirement statute for the state and for all municipal employees. And so what you're ultimately doing there, without getting into the weeds of the circumstances, is accepting a provision that allows a person to get additional credit of years of service, which I will say sounds strange to me from the basic understanding of Chapter 32, in the sense that the state dictates everything. And there's very little that is left to local control, right? So we've got retirement boards all over the state that'll talk about sort of eligibility, but they don't necessarily change the core of the statute, which typically looks to a framework, a grid, that, you know, certain years of service. You have to meet these standards of, of service to attain years. And it's very rare that a local municipality of any size can go ahead and say, well, yeah, but, you know, we're going to add five years to that, because your decision impacts the economics, right? The way that the whole system is funded. So I'd have to look at that and see whether or not it ties in some respect to some of the very limited provisions that are actually funded more by like local pensions. There are some provisions in Chapter 32, in particular, Section 85 each and each and a half, where if somebody gets injured in the line of duty, it has an impact there. And one of the sort of ways that those kinds of circumstances can resolve is if a local municipality retires a part-time person. So it may all tie into that, but I, beyond that, I'm just guessing. So I'm happy to look at it more closely for you and get back to you through.
Especially having a better understanding of implications to other areas. Because I mean, this is coming from the firefighter, but then it's, you know, who else is eligible for this? Are the police eligible for a similar provision, do they already have one? You know, any other unions in town?
I believe it includes, within this provision, for a permanent intermittent police officer or reserve. But this apply, would only apply to their time. So if they had part-time, on-call time outside of Lunenburg, that wouldn't count towards this. They would have had to work those five years or more towards their credibility risk within Lunenburg.
I'll talk to you offline about this.
I'll make a note to look at it further and follow up with you, Heather.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments on the warrant articles? I know we'll be discussing them every meeting until we make our recommendations. All right, so this is a status update on, next to our agenda is just a status update on the Town Manager and Select Board goals, which we're trying to hit every single month, just to do a quick recap. So if we go back in our drive, this is going to be July the 12th, is where we have our goals. So just recapping, so our first goal or objective is to continue to pursue a project acceptable to the town regarding the property and building at 30 School Street. And there's different actions, I know that this has been, well, first action is overseeing hazardous material abatement and demolition of the old primary school. This is in process of being worked with Ray Dunnett's. And then the rest of the actions here, seeking public engagement to review and evaluate landscape architect plans. We know that we have, we're waiting for municipal building design on some of this. And then next, third action, create working title that provides a clear and unique purpose. I know that there's more work that has to be done there. And then also, action four, communicating a funding source. So there's still more work to be done in the course of the year on that objective. But that's my read on where we're at with it. Any other thoughts? Okay, on objective number two, working with the Town Manager and Finance Director to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption or abatement. Lou or, excuse me, Mr. Franco or Mr. Alonso, either one of you want to provide us an update?
We are at action number two, which I am now halfway through the framework that I needed to provide, so call the next meeting, that would get us to action three. So we're at action number two.
Got it. And that's discussing determining the eligibility criteria for seniors to be able to qualify and participate in the program.
Correct.
And then the next action is working out those different models.
Yep.
Okay, and then our third objective is to review Select Board bylaws, propose updates for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. So we have been, action number one is reviewing Select Board policies and procedures. I believe after our workshop next week, we will have gone through them all, all of our policies and procedures, that will complete action number one. Action number two is review all Select Board bylaws, prepare modifications, updates to improve clarity and consistency with the town charter. I know that that's scheduled for an upcoming meeting, I'm not sure if that's next week or in October. Action number three is holding a public hearing to present the proposal and get feedback from the public. I know that that's going to happen in the winter time. And then, as well as the fourth action, which is a Town Meeting warrant article. So overall, I think we're making good progress on all of our, on the Select Board goals. And to the Town Manager, if you just want to give, you know, just a brief update on where you're at with your goals?
Not much change from the last update. The 9/25 Mass Ave goal, the update on that is, I contacted the abutter who had private property on that property that has been removed, that's a pop-up structure that had contents in it, is now off the property. So, and that was a necessary step for the EPA to, when their contractor comes in, to do the remediation to, because it's a very tight site. So that's the update I have on that goal for long-term planning. Capital planning I'm working on right now, and that includes all the assets of the town. And I previously updated the board on the pavement management plan. So that company was out within the last month to do that work for the LIDAR. And the last goal for employee recruitment, recognition, and retention, I don't have any updates tonight for that.
Okay, it's good to keep making progress. All right, current business, first is donation bins at Walmart. So as Selectwoman Sroka mentioned in her public comments, there's concern about the status of the donation bins. This was added to the agenda after you and I briefly talked about this. But I'm hoping that we can come to some consensus here on the plan ahead.
So the person I spoke to is the president or the CEO of Standard Recycling. And he rents space from Bricksmore to put these, the bins there. So he is going to be putting up cameras that are solar, so that he can monitor the situation there. And then I will touch back with him after they're up there and see if there is any difference, and if they deter people from actually just dumping stuff there. Because he's done this in other locations where he's had the same kind of issue, and it did deter them. So he's, he's hoping that that will help.
I like to go a little further than that, and, and the overall condition of those donation bins, it seems as if Bricksmore, as a, as the property owner in general, that they don't, they seem to have this problem with all of their tenants, right? And when, I know this time of the year, I feel like my, I'm not going to get on the soapbox that I get on every spring, I'm not going to get on it today. But every, you know, when you go through the, when you, in the winter time, will become more apparent just how polluted that property is.
Yes.
And so I did reach out to Town Council, to ask Town Council previously about, you know, what we can do as a municipality when it comes to that type of stuff. Because it's just, it's obscene to me, I hate to use the word obscene, it's obscene to me that you, that, you know, Hannaford, as much money as they're making, as much money as Walmart is making, that they just don't prioritize cleaning up the land. And I've reached out personally to the store managers of both Walmart and to Hannaford, and both say that Hannaford says, hey, we clean our lot routinely, we get it professionally cleaned once a week. Walmart claims that they send people out there every single shift to clean the lot, I don't believe any of this. But I know that Hannaford, I've seen the trucks at Hannaford cleaning the lot, so I know that that portion is true.
But that just is the, putting away the carts? What is the definition of cleaning?
They say they walk through the lot, that they pick up trash, you know, I've sent them photos of the lot after they supposedly did this. I, so what I'm getting at is, maybe it's time for communication to go to Bricksmore from the board, that just comments on that the property is not clean, that we would appreciate if they cleaned the property of litter and debris.
Well, Mr. Chair, the question is, what authority do we have?
Right.
Follow through with that? I mean, I'm forced sending a letter, we can, we can send a strongly worded letter.
Right.
Really, if they.
But what's the end game?
They decide that, yeah, that's a wonderful letter, I love that.
Right.
And they don't do anything, what is our course of action?
So the answer that, I've asked that question to Town Council, the answer to that is, all we really can do is send them a letter, that we have to change our rules if we want to do anything beyond sending them a letter and urging them to clean their property. So I would put, because I, before we go down the regulation route, maybe as a first step, that we should send that letter officially on behalf of the Select Board to Bricksmore. Because it's not just the donation bins, it's the rest of the lot as well. Donation bins is just the worst part.
Well, that's what you see right when you get up there.
Well, those bins everywhere are just, I mean, for many people, it's just a license to just dump anything.
Yes.
That's exactly what it is, they're dumping trash. I don't want to task this to you, Heather, I will draft the letter, and I'll provide it next week to the board.
It's a very interesting mindset using those donation bins as a dumping ground. I mean, it's no different in substance than just dumping it along the side of a road.
Which, which there are those in this town. People all the time. Auburn Street is one of them.
Yeah.
Just constantly just dump stuff by the side of the road.
I don't know what the mindset is. Is there plausible deniability? They sleep a little better because they put it near a bin and maybe somebody, I mean, you know, it's poor citizenship, that's all it is. And it's.
And they specifically tell you what you can and cannot donate.
Yeah, it's very clearly marked.
And they, they leave it on outside of the bin because it actually cannot fit in the bin.
Yeah. I mean, you know, they're not taking a ripped up couch. They're just not taking it.
And I think part of this is that, I mean, I don't know who's, I can't say what residents are dropping this off, if they're from our town or not from our town. But, you know, it is, I will say that it is difficult getting rid of certain items, right? I mean, if you don't, like our house, we order a dumpster every single year.
Well, you have to.
You have to.
Yeah.
Every spring. I mean, and then you clean up and anything big. And then usually I call my friends and who, who needs to throw stuff away? But I noticed when you go to, when you go to the plaza, that's a lot of those items that probably is trash, but that you can't just put in the regular trash, you know? So it's solving a problem without really solving it. Like the problem being that, how do people get rid of their tricycles when the kids outgrow them? If they don't want to pay for a full-size ten-yard dumpster.
Wow, but that, what do you mean? If that's, you've just given the caveat, if they don't want to get rid of it properly.
Yeah.
Well, if you get, put that caveat on everything. If you don't want to get rid of it properly, what do you do with your car? Just driving and say, take the VIN number out and just leave the car bed and nothing.
I did go to a thing out in Shirley, they had a, last year, where you could bring multiple, they had multiple vendor things there that you could get rid of household items. And there was a list of it. And one of them was bicycles. So you had to make a donation to whoever was taking them, but it was $10. And you could get rid of things there. They had music, music instruments. There was a long list, and I think maybe, maybe our town should look into something like that. It, like, then maybe they wouldn't be dumping them on the side of the road. But it was all in one location, and you drove your car through and just stopped at each little place to get rid of things.
I will make the statement that I think the people who are dumping them by the side of the road.
Probably won't show up.
Those are not the people that any of these things are going to address. If you are so blatant as to just literally throw furniture and bicycles and rusty whatever, you know, old TV sets on the side of the road.
I think there's like a range.
If you set up a place where they can bring it to, they're not going to bring it to it. That's, they just don't want to pay for normal refuse that is generated in a modern household, you know? Bicycles don't last forever, and kids don't last forever. And you may have a perfectly good bicycle that either you can give away, or you have to get rid of. And you have to get rid of it properly.
Yeah.
Two quick things. One, just as a sidebar, can I get on that list of people you call that need dumpster space? And two, thank you. I just want to say too, like, there is always another option, the amount of stuff that we have gotten rid of. I mean, granted, it's been in pretty good condition, but like old bicycles, you know, and when our son grew, outgrew his bicycles and everything, just put them down at the street for a day. You don't keep it out there forever, a week or whatever. You put it down and you say free. We have ninety percent of the stuff we put down at the street has gone, has been taken.
Yeah.
By some, but people come by and take it. Sports equipment, baseball bats, whatever, you know? So give it a second life.
Yeah. So that probably speaks to who maybe is tossing this stuff. All right. So I will prepare that for next meeting, so that won't be a hardship. And I'll send it to you first, for you to add it. All right. Update. Any other discussion on this? All right. Next, update on town school electricity accounts, municipal aggregation program, community choice power supply program to the town manager.
Okay. Very quickly, as the board knows, I've been, I did the board months back that I've been working with the energy broker, looking at what pricing is for electricity accounts that are set to expire in November, and had brought up the possibility of adding these accounts to the municipal aggregation program. So because of the severe rise in electricity costs and what we're being quoted for rates that would take over in November, the municipal aggregation program can take on our accounts, but there would be a one-time cost increase to the program because of our annual consumption that we use. We use about 1.7 million kilowatt hours annually between the town and school accounts. So this would increase that rate from 11.21 cents per kilowatt to 11.732 cents per kilowatt, which is about a half a penny increase. So they would send out a single notice to all the program users. So they can still, it's always an opt-in, opt-out program with the municipal aggregation program. And just for point of reference, the current basic service rate with Unitel is 13.436 cents a kilowatt. And that's their current rate. Their winter rates will, are not known yet, but there should be a significant rise in those rates. So the municipal aggregation by far is a much better option for electricity supply.
Well, depending on the source. So what's the source of the electricity from? Because I mean, coal at 11.7 is not a good option versus solar at 13, right? So it's all a matter of perspective.
Well, I think all.
So what is the source of the energy from?
They, I think they all have to have a portfolio where they use renewable energy.
Yeah.
That's kind of a mandate, I think, by the state.
That's my understanding as well. But do you know what percentage is renewable or?
Of the municipal aggregation program, of what First Point uses? I don't know. That's not something that ever came up.
Well, based on the state requirements, you have to publish that information. So they should have it handy. Would you mind asking them?
Of what? Yeah, I can do that. And so that would go through, our municipal aggregation contract is through November of 2024. So that would be for a 23-month period. We'd have to be locked into that rate, which if we ran the numbers against what we're being quoted, it's about $280,000 savings.
Good. So long as we're not getting it from coal. Good.
I'm sure that's a part, that's one of the components.
I'm sure it is. It's part of the components for Unitel.
Right.
Yep. That's all on that. You want me to move on to the next one?
Sure.
Okay. This is, is what the agenda topic is, authorization for the town manager to file the asset management grant application and execute the related agreement with Mass DEP. I supplied the paperwork for that grant. This is just a requirement component of this grant to the board vote at a public meeting to authorize me to.
What is the asset management grant application again?
This is related to stormwater. We applied for this grant in the spring, received it. And so this is just the final piece of getting it all submitted.
So we're looking for a motion to, pretty much as written on the agenda.
I would move that we authorize the town manager to file the asset management grant application and execute related agreement with Mass DEP. Second.
Any additional discussion? All right. If this meeting is in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Next, discuss site visit to town properties. So in our, in our Google Drive this evening, what you will find, and let me get to it because I'm in July still, is select board town properties. There's a link to a website, and thank you to the town manager. So first, there's, in here, you have a list of town properties, and then you have the link. And if we click on the link, and I'm going to open it in Safari. So this is a map of town properties that are under the care and custody of the select board. So one of the things that I'm looking for us to do over the next couple of months before it gets too cold outside, is for us to conduct site visits to some of these properties. So multiple, multiple, two kind of primary motives here. Number one is, you know, when we had town meeting, we've had two town meetings so far where residents showed up and identified that we had not walked town property and that there were dirt, or not dirt, debris, household trash, things that have been there for a significant period of time. So some of this is for us to be a bit proactive in trying to just monitor some of this property. And second is, next week, when we discuss pollinator habitat and community gardens, that we may want to have some sites in mind for where this stuff can go. So I'd like to coordinate, if possible, a couple of site visits. One's going to require some coordination, but I'd like to target our three largest parcels. So one of them is 111 acres on, at Fairview. I think that's the Woodruff property. Another one is the 40 acres that's off of Pleasant Street. And then the other is the approximately 44 acres that's at the, near the intersection of Pleasant Street and West Street.
I'm assuming these are town-owned, non-conservation.
Right. They're just select board.
Yeah. Select, yeah. So I'd like to see if, just as a start, I'd like to target those three properties. I think that what they're going to, what's going to, some of the intent here as well is that we are, you know, the, several of these properties are being maintained. The field, the 40 acres of fields that are on Pleasant Street are being maintained. The, not all 111 acres is accessible on the Woodruff, Old Woodruff Farm, but approximately 50 acres or so are. And that is also being farmed and maintained. So I think it would be helpful for us to kind of walk it, get some ideas for how we want to formulate some form of licensure to allow the continued use by residents and also just to identify any potential uses. So I'm wondering about Saturdays and when we are available. I would like to also do other properties, but I just as a start, those the first three that I'm thinking. But just want to see if anyone has any, what our thoughts are and when we can do this. Weekdays, last Tuesday of the month when we don't meet, it's probably going to be pitch black by then.
When you say Saturday, did you mean Saturday in general or this Saturday?
I meant Saturday in general, a Saturday. This Saturday could work, but a Saturday, preferably, you know, I think a good target is about two hours if we're going to hit a couple of sites.
I like Saturdays myself, but that's just my vote.
I, I'm not, before I commit to a Saturday or not, I'm not understanding what the goal is. What, we're just looking to walk town properties?
No. So I, maybe I didn't say that clearly enough. So the, the goal is to inspect the properties that are under our care and custody. That's part of it. The second part is to have an understanding that some of these properties are being utilized already. So how do we create some form of licensure to allow it to continue to be used, but formally? Because right now, it's just, people are just, it's kind of like first come, first served in a way. But I think it's, we don't, do we know who's hanging the fields on West Street? Like, do we know who's maintaining this Woodruff property?
I would have to look into that.
I think we have ideas, but I don't think we have confidence. So I think we need to formulate some form of rules about how we provide access to this property to different members of the community. And then I think another component of this is identifying potential future uses. One of the, you know, for the properties, such as, is this a good location for a community garden? Could it be for pollinator habitat? You know, do we want to just hold on to this property? Is this something that could, we could transfer to conservation or et cetera? So I think it's to initially start the process of just inspecting the properties, targeting the biggest ones.
Well, at the risk of drawing criticism, I would say that, is the board of selectmen the best people to inspect the properties?
They're under our care and custody.
I understand that. But, well, a lot of things are under our care and custody. That we, we can't actually hire people whose job it is to look at these things. I mean, what are we going to inspect? One of the things you said is like, okay, so a resident in two town meetings has pointed out debris. Like, are we going to look over the whole 116 acres and find out that there's any other debris? Like, that's the goal of that? Or, because I'm assuming we're going to be walking in places that probably other people have already walked. And if you want to find stuff that other people haven't, you got to go into the thicket of places that probably people don't go. Again, I'm just asking because I just, I'm not against going. It's always nice to be out in nature, walking around in the woods or on a field, but I just, I'm not clear on the goal. I don't know that I'm the best judge of where a pollinator habitat would be.
I don't have an open Saturday for three weeks. I'm just, so if it was a Saturday.
Neither, by the way.
Okay. So that doesn't work for me. A Saturday, that is.
Okay. Is there another day?
I don't, that's not saying that I wouldn't want to walk. But Saturdays typically don't work, and Sunday mornings definitely don't.
Yeah, we don't do things on Sundays. Well, I don't do things on Sunday and Saturdays.
Two things. Only this Saturday is bad for me. It's so I won't be anywhere near the state. So that's, so that's bad. And I'm always a fan of the, I see what Mr. Alonso was saying, but I'm always, I'm a fan of the walkthrough and the site visit. I just, I like that stuff. And just, just to kind of know, especially these big parcels, just to, you know, because they've been talked about before. And I'm like, what does that look like? What is, you know, I'm trying to imagine it. And I'm visual. I go out there and walk it. I appreciate that. I'll remember that better.
I've walked these properties, all three of the ones that I'm recommending us to go to. And I think it's, it's, it's hard to put into words my takeaways. So I think sometimes just, it's good just to see.
I just, I mean, I don't have any open Saturday for a month. The next three Saturdays, I am not available.
Would it be appropriate, then, for us to break this up? So that way, you know, perhaps, you know, Heather and I may be available on a Friday morning. And, you know, we may be able to go look at something on a Friday. And then maybe, you know, you and Lou may be available on a, you know, Sunday afternoon, and you could check something out. That would it be helpful for me to kind of take this list and come up with kind of like a good grouping of which ones could be grouped together? And then that way, we can kind of, maybe not all five of us.
Yeah.
We can take parts of this and come back with some pretty photos. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. That's the approach we'll take then. All right.
And you said you want to find a location for a pollinator habitat? Is that what part of it is?
Part of it is to see, see potential uses. I mean, I'm throwing those out there, but it's more than that. I mean, if we look at the fields of Woodruff property, they already are a pollinator habitat.
Yeah.
It already is, you know? So, all right. Okay. So let me just make my note real quick. Okay. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes for August the sixteenth. Is there a, any questions, comments on the meeting minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of August sixteenth, 2022.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes. All right. Warrants. We have a warrant in the amount of $1,245.08. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $457,483.39. Sorry, Tom, there's two parts to that. All right. We have a payroll deductions warrant in the amount of $23,509.31. And then we have a payroll warrant in the amount of $922,583.86. Are there any action, any action items this evening? Committee reports.
Well, the school committee had another meeting, and they did change their protocol for a public comment, per your suggestion, I believe. Did you suggest that?
I made several.
Yes. So public comment at the beginning will now be open to anything that falls under school committee. So, public comment at the beginning will now be open to anything that falls under school committee purview.
That is excellent.
Was it at all?
It was just what was on the agenda. So they changed it back.
You had to wait through the whole meeting to figure out when the middle portion would be. And that was my comment to them when I met with them.
So they did change that. Next meeting is next week, and I think it's on Zoom.
Okay. I have to say, you know, when I met with them, I, I made several requests, and I'm quite impressed that it was very well received and that they've already implemented all my, all the requests. So that's really good.
They were not unreasonable.
No.
So.
They were not.
No.
All right. I have, FinCom is meeting.
We just skipped over Lou. Lou has a whole bunch of notes. Council on Aging.
Doesn't matter. I just jumped in.
No, no, no.
I knew, I saw all the notes, and I'm like, I'm going to get this in.
I know, but you see them all.
I don't care. If you want to go first, go ahead.
No, I just did.
All right. So this is for the Council on Aging. Heather covered a bunch of this, you know, stuff that would be in her purview to cover. But I'm just going to, so note that CJ Carroll, the principal assessor, appeared today and explained, you know, delivered some background and illustrative eligibility requirement for the senior tax relief effort that we're working on. And also explained that this requires a special legislate, special legislation under home rule, and that it's not a quick process. So one of the things that came out of this discussion was that we need to be getting the message out there that expectation setting, essentially, that this isn't going to happen overnight, but that the wheels are in motion, the effort has been undertaken, but just, it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take a while. There's a multi-layered process. And previously, at previous meetings, I've, I had explained that, you know, that what was going on with all the levers that were, and CJ did a little bit of this today too, you know, eligibility requirements in income, assets, levels, length of time in town, et cetera. So that's that, that's what went on with that aspect. And.
I just have a question.
Yes.
I think it's understandably difficult to talk to someone who maybe is in their, you know, 70s or 80s and say, well, it's going to be a couple more years.
Right, the longevity of, they might, you know, I'm not just saying.
Maybe difficult, but it's.
It is, it is what it is. But, you know, that's what they're, they're, because they want it, because they have a reason to want it now.
Yeah, I mean, this thing has to come out of the relief, the tax relief group, the senior tax relief group. Go over to this board, go to town meeting, then go to the legislature. I mean, this is a multi-step process.
And bureaucracy works the way it does.
So I, we just want to expectations. I, I agree with you. It's a difficult conversation, but it's a conversation that needs to happen. This way, you know, but they should know that the wheels are in motion. So.
Banking process.
And that's really about it. That was the main substance of what I wanted to say, and that's about all.
And forgive me for interrupting you, Lou. I should have waited till you were done.
Oh, no problem, no problem. It's another point. I feel now obliged to say I apologize for jumping over. Announcing my FinCom appointment of.
I just want everybody to know, I'm not that fragile. I'm really not.
Well, I just figured if he went that way and he were skipped, we may not come back to that notes.
All right. Now, we all get a little silly as it gets a little later in the evening, normally, anyway. All right. I don't have any committee reports. Municipal Building Design Committee meets on Monday, 6 o'clock. All right. Upcoming meetings. We have a meeting next Tuesday on the 20th, and then three.
I will not be, I will not be here for that meeting in, either in person or remote.
Okay. It's a policy workshop. Is your preference for us to reschedule the policy workshop?
Are they going to take final votes on the policy?
No, no.
Then, no, then don't reschedule it, and I'll catch up.
Okay. All right.
I think that you don't know the policy that well. I know, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. No, I was kidding because you're the longest standing member. Why do you need to be at that? It's really for me to review. Right?
Yes.
I'm just pointing out the obvious.
All right. And then we have the three meetings scheduled for the month of October. Any public comments this evening from the public?
We have no public.
All right. From the town manager.
No comment from.
From the board.
Michael Wright, oh, Chair, Chairperson Jeffries.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out, when we, when you were reviewing our status update on the goals, maybe we could put them up on the screen next time, just so that people watching could see what you're reading off of.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Just for future reference, like, if we're going to do it monthly, so they can see our progress when we say we're on number two, and then, and then the next one, like Tom says, we're going to be on number three next time, so that they know how many are actually in that set of goals.
Yeah. That is, that's good advice.
Okay.
And I think, for sure, we'll just have to make sure that next time we bring them into the weeks folder.
They can visualize our progress like we are.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, just briefly, and I'm going to keep this really short because it's basically moot at this point, based on the result of it. And I didn't bring it up under review of town meeting warrant articles because it was not submitted officially as a warrant article. But I did discuss a proposal for an amendment to the sewer commission, the sewer bylaw with the sewer commission at the meeting earlier tonight. I won't get into the weeds of what it was about because the outcome was that while the sewer commission was very, very receptive to what I had to say and would basically approve it, they, and bless it, essentially, they don't want to see it go on the warrant article for, on the warrant for November. So it will get revisited for May.
Any additional comments this evening from the board? Okay. Tonight, the Select Board is going to be entering into an executive session following this meeting. So, Mr. Franco, would you mind reading the motion?
Sure. Motion to enter into executive session and to adjourn after executive session.
After exiting.
After exiting, what did I say? After exiting executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining because open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body.
Second. Okay. This is a roll call vote. Selectwoman Sroka.
Yes.
Aye. Sorry. Before that, is there any additional discussion? With that, this is a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Why roll call?
Okay. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Selectwoman Franco.
Yes, aye. Thank you.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And with that, we're going to adjourn tonight and go into executive session, exiting. When we leave executive session, we'll adjourn the full meeting. Thank you for those at home who've joined with us this evening, and we will see you here next week at 7:00 PM. Have a good night.